Hey, we have Leslie on camera. Yay.
Yes, I think that was as of Monday. Super exciting addition.
Right on.
Hi, Leslie. Michelle, I'm going to try and log on from my laptop so that my iPad isn't dying.
Small water, John?
Not quite, but you know, looking forward to it.
It's good for you.
Halfway there. Well, part of the way there.
Okay.
Waiting for mayor. Okay.
So did everybody hear that we had the first case of coronavirus or actually the first coronavirus mortality February 6th in Santa Clara County?
I thought you were going to say Morton Hill. It was asked during the county call today which city, but they didn't, they didn't answer that question.
Yeah. That was interesting information.
I think to clarify, that would be the first known case of it. Well, they'll know one before that eventually too.
Yeah, it was on CNN within an hour.
The mayor should be on any minute. I just resent him the link.
Yeah, there are a few panic moments.
Hello, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Had a momentary scare there. I couldn't find the email that had the Zoom meeting item. I go, where is it? Oh, Michelle just sent me, we sent me the invite. So we have quorum, looks like. All right, so I will go ahead and call tonight's council meeting to order and I'll ask the deputy city clerk, or I'm sorry, the minutes clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Constantine?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Spring? Councilmember Spring?
You're muted.
Martinez Beltran?
Here.
Okay, I'm here. Sorry. Obviously, I'm here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and could you please declare the posting of tonight's agenda?
Today's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code section 54954.2.
Great, thank you very much and welcome everyone. And I could now ask the city manager Christina Turner for her report.
Good evening. I just want to share one thing this evening, and that is related to DePaul Health Center. And so we sent out in our email communications that DePaul is now being used as a COVID-19 testing facility. And it's specifically for county of Santa Clara health system patients as well as employees. And so this includes St. Louis as well as Valley Health Center in Gilroy. It's also for uninsured patients and it's being done only on a referral basis and by appointment in the mornings. And it's only from a referral that you would get through a county physician. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the city attorney, Mr. Larkin, if he has a report this evening.
A couple of things, Mayor. First of all, on Friday, despite everything that's going on, High Speed Rail will be releasing its draft environmental impact report for the segment from between Gilroy and San Francisco. As council members are aware, at your last meeting, you approved a contract with David J. Powers and Associates for assistance in reviewing that D R. We met with the consultants yesterday, the members of the consultant team, which includes David J. Powers and several sub consultants. And we have come up with an aggressive plan to both review that document and to respond with comments and with particular mitigation suggestions. And we'll be meeting frequently over the next few weeks as we digest that document. And then we'll be coming back to council with our proposals and for some discussion over other things that the the city may want to comment on or ask for as part of the mitigation measures. Another thing I want to report on is sort of good news that's dwarfed by the bad news. The good news is that we do have insurance for business interruption. The bad news is that overwhelms the good news is that insurance is really designed for things like a single entity being hit with Legionnaires' disease that interrupts business. It's not meant to cover a worldwide pandemic. So we have half a million dollars in insurance through Plan JPA, but that half a million dollars, if we get it all, because it's part of the $10 million policy that we share with other JPAs. So if Plan JPA gets the full $500,000, that again gets sold out between 18 different agencies. There is legislation pending in Congress that would require insurers to pay full amounts to their insured, but that is unlikely to pass because it would pretty much bankrupt the insurance industry. There, there are some other legislative fixes that are in the works. The next proposal, current currently, the legislation that is likely to pass the House tomorrow and be signed into law this week would only assist cities of 500,000 or more, which is limited to fewer than 200 cities in the country. But the next round of stimulus legislation is supposed to, and we've been told it will include some protections for business losses or revenue losses for smaller cities. So we're looking forward to that. That, that ends my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Larkin. Now open this up now for public comment. This public comment is for items that are not tonight's agenda. Therefore, we cannot talk about them. However, if there needs to be some follow up, we will do so either in a subsequent meeting or we will contact you. And I see there are six attendees and I don't see any hands up yet. I will make notice that there is a public, there is a letter that would be put into public record from Mr. Zachary Hilton. And again, I don't see any hands going up. So then I will go ahead and go on and ask my colleagues for an adoption of tonight's agenda. Okay, I didn't, I heard a couple of some move there a second. Yeah, okay, John's gonna second it. Okay, we'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Hi.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Yes.
Martinez Beltran?
Hi.
McKay?
Hi.
Okay, and tonight's, we have one item on our consent calendar. So I will ask if there's any members of the public or if any of my colleagues would wish to pull this item. If not, I don't see any hands up going for the attendees. So then I will go ahead and ask for a motion on the consent counter.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Hi.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Spring?
Hi.
Martinez Beltran?
Hi.
McKay?
Bye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And now we're moving on to other business, which is the item number two, which is the accepted 2020 city infrastructure update report. Mr. Gioni, will you be giving this report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Constantine. And I am going to share my screen. All right, you guys able to see the presentation?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, thanks. So this is a report we've done annually. This is the third year we've done it and we usually time it before the budget or the mid-cycle update as we're preparing to give the council really the state of what our infrastructure in the city, where we're at on funding our infrastructure and how our infrastructure is doing. So we're doing this ahead of the budget process. So we do, in the middle of all this bad news, we do have, have some good news and we'll, we'll get to that as we just received our updated pavement management report for this year. So that's included in draft format. But as I mentioned, the purpose of this report is to identify the infrastructure needs and the funding issues. So some differences from last year's report in 2019. We have additional impacts from state legislation that you've heard much about. Want to update the herbicide use discussion. Update our pavement management data and, and would note that our unfunded needs have decreased significantly in the last year. And we'll go through a couple of the reasons why that has happened. So I'm going to jump straight into the different areas of infrastructure. The first one are our streets and sidewalks. And our streets and sidewalks are still maintained at a, at a, at a good level. And we will note, we did just, as I noted, receive an update to our payment management evaluation and our overall weighted PCI for the city is 73. So it actually has increased. And with that, our backlog has actually increased too. And you, you may say, if you've looked into the, if you looked into the detail of the report, how does the backlog and the PCI increase? Well, the cost to maintain payment is also increasing too. So that, that changes the backlog as well as a different type of treatments that are, that are necessary. So, so that, that, that is a big positive for us to see that, see us basically maintaining our payment level. And a lot of that has to do with the new funding we've received from SB1 as well as Measure B, as well as many of the things we've done to try and put all those dollars into the pavement rehab every year, as, as well as the past year's general fund investment, which was a million dollars a year for a number of years. On our basic operations, we're still in need of about 200,000 in annual revenue for our basic street maintenance operations. In the Great Recession, we downsized our staff and basically eliminated things like regular red curb painting and other areas like that, that we, we've not brought back the staff to do that. The, the pavement actual need now that where we're sitting has dropped considerably from over $2 million in unfunded need for pavement to 1.1 million. So, so that's, that's the, the, the big, big success we've had over the last several years in maintaining that, that pavement condition. And I should note, this report, we get the detailed report every three years. So this is the first year we've had it in the last three years and we spent all this money that we've gotten on pavement. So it's, it's working out well. I will note, so in the streets and sidewalk areas, we have been funding our sidewalk maintenance completely from RDCS fees. And we, we believe we have enough put away that we're going to be able to continue to do that for, for the coming years. But after in the long term, that funding source will likely be gone and we won't have that, that funding source to fund sidewalk maintenance. We have been doing some evaluation as the city's looked at this many times in the past on many cities in the area and around the state actually require the residents to maintain the sidewalks themselves. So that would always be an option down the road for the council to consider. Not usually a popular option with the community, but many cities do require it, including San Jose. So jumping to downtown maintenance, won't spend too much time here. We've maintained the downtown in a good level, at a good level. We have mentioned year to year, if increased use of the downtown continues, we may need additional resources to fund maintaining the downtown at the same level it's at. And this is the conversation we also have every year is the tree lighting. We installed the tree lighting with an expectation that it would last for two years and it's beginning to fail. And the, the two years will be up before this, this holiday season. So again, there's an annual funding need of about $15,000 to continue to maintain the streetlights, the twinkle lights. And that's not included in the budget. So it's an unfunded need. Our storm drain system, we, is in good shape, but I just want to note again, we've been using RDCS funds that we have, have put away to do maintenance on the storm drain system as needed. And we, we think we have funds bank that we can use for the next several years, but that will go away as well. But the big, the big thing on the horizon, actually less than 10 years from now, is the new requirements for trash capture as it relates to storm drains that we're trying to identify what the cost of that will be for both the capital cost and the maintenance cost. The capital cost, we believe, will be in the millions and the maintenance costs in the, in the tens to hundreds of thousands. But we, we're still working on that and we'll have a better idea after we do another study this coming fiscal year. Buildings and facilities, well maintained. And this is an area where our unfunded needs has dropped considerably. We're still noting 51,000 in unfunded needs. But the big thing that we, we've planned in our future maintenance is we, we switch from a park impact fee to a Quimby fee for subdivisions and we can use that fee for renovation of facilities, like say we needed to renovate the outdoor sports center fields like we did previously. That would be a funding source available for that. So knowing that we have those fees potentially in the future has dropped our unfunded need in the buildings and facilities area pretty significantly. Parks and, parks and trails, we just say we're maintaining our parks for safety, not for aesthetics. We are maintaining our parks in an average condition as, at best, as compared to other agencies. So we make sure they're safe, but there's not a lot going on past that. And we don't, we haven't even calculated how much it would cost to really improve the aesthetics and, you know, improve like our ball fields at community parks. We just haven't done that because it hasn't been a priority. And then we are still using RDCS funds from the Park Maintenance Fund to fund the park maintenance at about $700,000 a year. Of that is coming from that. And we estimate that that will be gone in the next five to six years too. So that would be an unfunded need when those funds are depleted. And we will use our Quimby fees for future renovations of parks, which helps us with our, our unfunded future replacement, but not our day-to-day operating needs. And then just want to provide a quick update on herbicide use. And we had not used glyphosate in our parks and planned on testing several other means to take care of weeds in our parks, but under the shelter in place order, we're unable to do any testing. And as you see, most of our city parks, they are now overgrown with weeds because that hasn't been an essential service for us to, to maintain. So, so that testing is going to have to happen down the road further. Our landscape assessment district, unfunded needs in landscape assessment district have dropped as well too. We had another, we didn't have, both areas, we tried to increase the assessment and get approved, but one of the areas was improved and they're going to see a higher level of maintenance. So the unfunded replacement needs in the landscape assessment district continue to improve, actually, just by the outreach we've been doing to the residents and our, and our, and our management over the last several years. And then our last two groups, I'll just group together. It's our water and wastewater systems. And we, we have increased the rates in the, for wastewater, and that was last year. And that was really to deal with the repair of the, the existing system as it relates to infiltration and inflow. So we have some significant work to there, do there, but that's in progress and it's funded. So we believe our utility system at this point is, is fully funded. And the future projects relating to growth, we would fund those with impact fees and continue to plan for those. And that includes like our treatment plant expansion and an additional trunk line to the treatment plant. So just the kind of final, getting back to the purpose of this report, the current unfunded maintenance is approximately 1.4 million annually and primarily in the area of pavement. That was the 1.1 million. And this anticipated, we anticipate that that unfunded need will grow within the next six years based on depleting the RDCS revenues that we've been using to maintain our facilities. And it would grow by at least 850,000 and probably more depending on what happens with requirements to manage our storm system. And that completes my report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'll ask my colleagues if there are any questions. Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you. That was fast of raising the hand this time. The, thank you, Chris. Appreciate your report. A couple of questions I have with regards to funding, you mentioned funding from SB1 and Measure B. Do we have a way to compare what we are getting versus what we're supposed to be getting?
Um, yeah, well, we, 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 we get the numbers from for, for both areas and the state estimates those. And yeah, so we can evaluate it. I don't have the penny for penny, but we can do that. And I believe it's pretty close. We're doing Measure B's reimbursement. So, but I think we're pretty close and I, I, I think our, we could, we can get those numbers. I don't have them in front of me.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if there's a way for us to track what, what we kind of thinking we should be getting and what actually is being or what is coming our way.
Yeah, I know for Measure B, our reimbursement requests are very, very close to the funding that we anticipated getting. And then for SB1, I'd have to check, but I believe those are really, it's two.
Hi, Chris. This is Dad. I hope I could come in and ask to try and answer a question for you.
Yeah.
Uh, good, good evening. This is Dad, Finance Director. Yes, for the SB1, we have been projecting about $800,000 we received this year from the state and about, about the same amount last year. And that's what we've been receiving the last two years. So very much matched what we projected. But since the, as we all know of the COVID-19, there might be some impact to the SB1 revenue. But from listening to the, the league conference and the CSMFO conference, they said that because the SB1 tax revenues is derived mostly from the gas tax and the gas tax based on the gas consumption and it's not based on the sales. So wherever you purchase one gallon, you have to pay a fixed amount. And they, they did mention that there will be some impact definitely, but it might not be as much, or trusty as much as we, we'll be expecting from like sales tax in general. Okay, thank you. Yeah, if there's a way to just keep an eye on it, because I don't know what's going to happen with those numbers either. And it might have possibly an impact, right? Yes.
Yes.
So that's kind of behind my question. And then Chris, I think that one is for you, the, the herbicide testing. Sorry. Yes, I'll say hi. Yeah, he's thinking I'm talking to him. So herbicide testing, I understand we're not doing any testing and it's, it's this kind of in context of what I call the poison-free Morgan Hill project, right, that I'm a huge advocate with. So with everything growing over, now that leads to actually a different question. Are we running into a problem that this might become a fire causing issue at some point?
So, so all of our areas that we have evaluated where there's fire risk, like if they're next to, like if they're in a park and they're next to a wooden fence, we would evaluate that our right of way. So we are taking care of the areas where we believe there's a fire hazard because that's an essential service. But just the general park areas, we, that's what we have been letting go. So yeah, and we will, the, the hope is, you know, we will be able to abate the weeds before the fire season this next month because we are going to be doing that work in our open space and right of ways in many other areas because that is essential.
And you know, I mean, it's a comment, but that is kind of testing, not using poison as well, right? Doesn't bother me, to be honest. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem Martinez Beltran, your question?
Mayor, my, my computer is dying. So I'm gonna, if I can wait just a second, I'm trying to get that plugged in.
Okay, I'll go to the council member Carr, your, your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thanks for the report. It's, it's good to hear that our strategy over the last three years of how we're using general fund money in connection with, with SB1 and Measure B has actually worked and that we've actually improved our PCI and lowered our unfunded amounts here. I'm curious though, you talked a little bit about essential services and some of the things we're unable to do, like what council member Spring was just talking about, something that we're all big advocates for and making Morgan Hill to be a poison-free environment. Are most of the maintenance and the infrastructure items that are on here, are they essential services for us?
Um, well, I mean, there, I mean, that, I mean, depends on the definition of essential service. So the essential service, when I was referring to what we're going to be doing under the shelter in place order is kind of specifically told to us by, by the shelter in place order. What is an essential service for the city of Morgan Hill? I think you would determine as the council, which, you know, everything tied to safety relating to our streets and those sort of things, we place as essential, right? So if it's a fire hazard, road maintenance, those are essential. I mean, when we're talking park maintenance, you know, if we want the parks to be open, maintaining them for safety is an essential service. So like when I talk about the unfunded needs for the, for our park maintenance, we're basically maintaining our parks for safety. And then the future replacement would be, needs would be to make sure we have a park in the future. It's not to make it the nicest park in the world with maybe a couple of exceptions. And then, so the landscape assessment district, you know, if the residents don't want to pay in some cases, we'll just chop everything down and make sure it's not a fire hazard. And we might have to spend a little bit of money because residents aren't willing to pay for it, but we would make sure that the essential part of it is done. I mean, we, we believe, you know, maintaining our buildings is essential. But, you know, that could be debated too. You could say, do we, do we want to not have some of these buildings or not open these buildings?
So is it, is it fair to say that particularly for things like park maintenance and the trails and things, we've, we've only been maintaining them at an essential service level or a safety level?
Yeah, pretty close to that. We do try and do a little bit more as we have resources to do and we prioritize. Like our maintenance team will have a, I mean, just to give you an example, we may have a work order list of 200 work orders and you know, 100 of them are things they're not going to get to because they're not essential, right? And they, they might be nice to do in the park, but they're not, not essential. So we would try and do those things as we can, but they won't, they won't be prioritized. We're not doing much more than is essential. And I would just say, a lot of it just depends on what happens. So if we have, because we do everything, you know, is, is one kind of group to do it as efficiently possible. If we have a big storm season and, which turn, usually turns into a big road maintenance season, that usually takes priority over everything. We don't have a big rainy season, the roads don't degrade as much, we tend to be able to get a little bit more accomplished.
Okay. And then perhaps this is a question for Dad or, or for the city attorney. When it comes to SB1 and Measure B and any loss in revenue as a result of what's going on with the economy today, does any of that get backfilled by the CARES Act or what Congress passed today?
Do you want to take that? From my, no council member is that, this is Dad, by the, by the way, Finance Director, from what I know is, does not, the federal country does not have the program in the CARES Act that just recently passed. That's program in the CARES Act that just recently passed that would backfill any state or local government shortfall in revenue. But I think that's something that the maybe probably currently debate in the next program, 4.0.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding as well, although there was a the state does receive a significant amount of money from the federal government under the prior acts, but but I don't think that's designated to backfill SB one or any of those kinds of revenues.
The reason I ask, VTA while anticipating a 50% reduction in sales tax that they receive is anticipating as well that money that went will go through MTC. They're, they were hearing on it today and that VTA is expecting to be made whole from the CARES Act and those monies that are coming down. Not necessarily measure B, but in operating dollars. But I've never heard whether any of that is, is monies that would backfill something like measure B.
Yeah, I think there's, there is money for, for operations. Just, I just don't know if there, anything to backfill the tax revenues.
Okay. That'll be an important thing to watch is we're counting on for a couple of significant things in South County, measure B dollars. I know we have approval on the 16.5 we need on the Hale Avenue extension, but we need to make sure we watch those dollars closely, not just for street maintenance, but things like the Caltrain monies at the merit spot, so hard to get improved down here. But I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kay.
Chris, thank you very much for the presentation. I actually spoke to Christine, I got most of my questions answered. I guess the one thing that I was going to ask touched on by Councilmember Carr is how the Hale Extension work is going. And I know that there was some backfill money that we were as a city gonna need to put into the, into the, the funding and just wondering how that's all looking right now.
Yeah, as Councilmember Carr mentioned, it's looking, it's looking good. We do not have a final agreement with the, the full funding in front of us, but we, I hope, we hope to have that to you as a council next month with VTA. But we have at this, at, at all levels, I think we've been in alignment with VTA in the county now that we are able to, to move this project forward. So we have support from them. And that was as recently as, as last Friday. So we're just kind of moving through the paperwork and we should be, we should be really, really close. And we, we have some different strategies to make sure we can make the, the project whole either way. But it, but with VTA, it looks like it's gonna, gonna come through. And then timing wise for the project, we would likely begin after, after summer. And a lot of that would have to do with us just timing our bidding with the flood control project that the water district's doing. And we're working on really jointly on this project. So, so we're almost there.
Okay, thank you. It, it impacts the, the community in so many different ways. Thank you very much.
And Mayor Protem Martiz-Beltrane?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry about that bleep. Um, hi, Chris. Thanks again so much for the report to prepare us here. I'm just wondering if I'm looking at the streets and sidewalks with the biggest kind of number glaring at us there at the 1.11 million. So I wanted to ask if you could help me understand a little bit more with the 200 in the annual revenue for the, to fully fund our basic maintenance, that's of the streets. The 1.1 or 1.11 million annually in the unfunded capital street repair would be what?
That's the, that is basically our pavement rehab that we do annually. And that's usually one big project that happens every summer. And I think at the last meeting, we talked about that project. We're doing, we basically, we need to put another 1.1 million into that project every year to maintain our PCI. That's what our report is telling us. So that is a capital need for maintaining. And the 200 is an operational need for our, our team to, to do some of the basic services we think we still need to do.
Is that services that, that we foresee being asked to do by residents, potholes, roots lifting? Or are those for the basic maintenance that we've already identified need to be done?
Yeah, they're, they're, they, those are needs that we need to get done, that we don't have the resources to get done. And like Rick had mentioned, we sometimes are able to catch up. But one of the big things is red curbs throughout the city, we have no proactive program to repaint the red curbs. We do it when people complain, but we have no one to even check and we don't, we just don't have time to do it. So we don't, we don't fund that. We have, you'll often see some of our barricades, you know, at the ends of streets that are smashed. And we just don't have the resources to do it because it's not a need. When we have the ability to catch up or we have sometimes volunteers that come in, we're able to do some catch up on those. But there's a whole bunch of lists of things like that that should be done that we're unable to do because we don't have the resources to do.
Okay, thank you. And then the 150 annually, you're not, you're anticipating that'll come once we've completely exhausted the RDCS. That's going to come in another five to six years down the road.
Yeah, that's our, that's our estimate.
Then for the storm drain system, you talked about a possibility of dollars. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of dollars for that? Or will that the millions in capital that you talk about for the next 10 years? Or is that all through user fees? Well, but will there be some type of funding that will be available to us to address this millions of dollars that we'll need to invest?
There, there, there is not a user fee right now. There's, we've, and I've talked about this for the last several reports. There was state legislation passed, I believe it's probably three years ago now, that would allow you to treat your storm system like a sewer system and charge residents a fee for the maintenance. That, that, that state law has not been tested in court yet. And everyone's still waiting to see what other cities move forward with. There was a coalition of cities in Southern California that was working on it, but we have, they have not moved forward. So we're still kind of watching. So there may be an opportunity for that down the road.
Okay, and when is, when do those regulations go into effect?
I think we have about, I think to get to total compliance, I believe we have nine more years, which seems like a lot of time, but not when we have to plan and, and get through it. And in our, and it is a big need and a big unforeseen need. But one of the things that we are doing is in our CIP, we have a proposed a, a planning document that we're going to produce in the next fiscal year that will really help us identify more of these things, identify exactly what the needs will be.
Okay, great. Um, and then on the building facilities, I mean, that's great, the 51,000, looks like that's come down. But I just wanted to understand the limitation, are there limitations on what we're able to use the Quimby fees for the restoration?
Yes. There, there are limitations. It's, it's renovation. So we can't use it to say, hey, we're gonna just pay guys to go mow the lawn. It'd have to be renovation of a park or recreation facility. And then we have to make certain findings to use those fees, but we would, we would work through that.
The big difference is with park impact fees, if you want to build a building, it has to be a brand new building. With Quimby Act fees, we can use it for any kind of capital improvement.
Thank you.
Provided that it is a resource to the people that are paying. It's a like community center, it's a resource to the whole community.
Okay, great. And are we also, Don, since you're on, and I'm wanting to ask again about the different category, the parks, trails and open spaces, are we able to use the Quinn, Quinnby fees? It's just that's a newer fee since we changed from the RDCS and that's similar, but are we able to use those fees for the parks as well? Is there limitations on that for renovation?
Well, we can use
New can be existing?
Yes and no. We can use it to acquire new parkland, which is the main purpose of the Quimby fees. We could use it to pave new trails if we were looking for new paved trails. We can't use it for routine maintenance though. So if it's just maintaining our park trails, then that's not a purpose we can use it for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And at this time, I will go ahead and open this up for questions from the public. I'll give, I see one hand up and it is Mr. Baranowski. So if somebody could unmute Mr. Baranowski's mic. Okay, you're unmuted, Mr. Baranowski.
Good evening. And it is a question which, given this is on the agenda, I hope Chris can give a short answer. If not, maybe you could follow up. But these are the type of questions I believe that the public will want to understand in support of any budget that's going to happen this year. This goes back to the 1.1 million. And Chris, I do recall also watching your video to the CAG group so months ago. And just trying to understand the genesis of it, the actual root cause of that, if I remember right, it has its beginning, something to do with deferred maintenance more than 10 years ago. I know that impact fees are by law not allowed to support maintenance. So I'm curious, why, how did it get to be unfunded, even though it's come down from 2 million? What is the, what is the source of, of the, of the funds for that? How did it become, how did it become underfunded? If you could explain that in a short answer, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Baranowski. We do not use impact fees for our pavement rehab program at all. So the, the 1.1 for pavement rehab, we, we actually through a grant every three years, we have, someone comes and basically looks at every street in the city and, and looks at that street and says, this is the type of maintenance you should be doing on this street right now. You know, streets that are in good condition, they would have like what's called a slurry seal put on top of it to keep water from intruding. Streets are in bad condition, may need to be completely reconstructed, which costs a lot more than, say, a seal. But that, that report basically tells us what type of maintenance is needed for every street segment in the city and what the estimated cost for doing that, that maintenance or rehab is. And when it comes forward and said, and we say, we're going to be investing 2.5 million in our funds, but it's going to cost us 3.6 million to keep at the level we're at. That's where we get the 1.1 in unfunded needs because we're funding it at two and a half million, but it's costing us. We need to be funding it at 3.6 million. So it's kind of a math equation. The funding that we use primarily for funding our pavement rehabilitation program is gas tax money that the city's been getting for a long time. Now, the new gas tax money for MSB one that's added on top of that, the measure B sales tax money that started in 2016. And then there's a slew of other small things that are dedicated that, that are required to be used for pavement. And so those things are the dedicated revenue sources that we use that aren't quite enough. And then the city, the city council ultimately can make a decision to supplement that with general fund dollars to, to provide more maintenance. Historically, across the state, the gas tax used to take care of all the maintenance of the roads for the state as well as the city. But over many, many decades, as, as Dad, our Finance Director explained earlier, the gas tax is based on consumption, not on the cost of gas. And consumption across the state actually didn't go up. And we actually, even though there's more vehicles, and that has to do with efficiency of vehicles and electric vehicles who don't pay into the gas tax at all, but use the roads. So our revenues across the state stayed really flat for a long time, but the cost of doing the maintenance kept going up with inflation. And that's what ultimately led to the, the unfunded backlog of street maintenance across the whole state.
Okay, and then I just see it's Sean. I don't see your last name, so I'll go ahead and ask, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This is John Boss. So on that note about the gas tax providing most of the maintenance money, is the 1.1 taking into account the current less consumption that's happening currently? We hear it all about stockpiles of oil, oil trading negative, you know?
Yeah, so, so the, the 1.1 comes from the math equation. As was stated earlier, we are using the, the anticipated revenues we've had earlier for SB one and for measure B. So if the sales tax for measure P revenue goes down and the gas tax goes down, we're going to have less revenues in the future that we collect and are able to use. So if those go down by together, they're probably about 1.8 million, maybe 1.7 million, sorry, 1.7 million. If they go down by 10%, those revenues go by, down by 10%, we're going to have 170,000 less. And so our unfunded backlog is going to grow, I mean, our unfunded need is going to grow by that much.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. And then I will go ahead and I'll give it a second. No more hands going up? All right, we'll move back over and I will ask for actually, this was just to receive the update. So if there's any, any comments that anyone would like to make? Ask you to raise your hand now, otherwise we'll move on to item number three. I don't see anyone's hand going up. So we'll just receive the report and go on to item three, which is to accept the March 2020 financial and investment and city manager authority reports. And I, Mr. Wayne's getting this, he prepared the reports, I assume the city manager is going to be giving the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this evening, what we're going to do is we're going to hold the third quarter results into our budget presentation. And so I would just ask that we can move to the next item and then we'll cover that third quarter report during that item.
Okay, so we'll consider this report accepted.
So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
So we're now moving on to item four?
Correct.
Just so everyone knows, we are now on item four, which is to the introduction to the, to the recommended fiscal year 2020, 2021 and fiscal year 2021, 2022 by annual operating and, and fiscal year 2020, 21 through 25, 26 capital improvement program. That's a mouthful.
Great. All right, I am getting my slideshow ready. And Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so
I'll ask you, before you get, sorry, if there's anybody that is having difficulty hearing, let us know.
Please.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so this evening, we are going to go ahead and introduce the recommended budget. It's for fiscal year 2021 and 21, 21, 22, the biannual operating budget as well as the capital improvement program budget. And that runs for six years from fiscal year 2021 through 25, 26. So let's talk about what the outline for this evening looks like. We're going to look at sustainable Morgan Hill as well as council priorities. We're going to talk about the budget process and foundation. And then I'll go through the quarterly financial update for March 31st, 2020. At that point, we'll start talking about the recommended budget. And what we're going to do is we're going to walk through the budget. And so we have it in the form of a flipping book now. And so I'll walk through that with you with intention to help the council and the community as you continue to review the budget document. We will talk about the fiscal impacts of COVID-19. And then we'll move to the capital improvement program strategy. We'll then talk about strategies to address the revenue impacts from COVID-19. And then we'll review the principles to guide the sustainable budget strategy. And those principles were put in place many years ago. So I want to walk through those and have council validate that they still believe that those are the right principles as we move forward. And then we'll talk about next. Okay, just for review, here is our sustainable Morgan Hill document that was reviewed and edited in our January 2020 goal setting. Our vision is to sustain a safe, inclusive, socially responsible, environmentally conscious and economically sound community. Choose Morgan Hill. The city of Morgan Hill is the best community for people to live, work, visit and operate their business. The council then looked at the ongoing priorities. And so typically, these don't change a whole lot from year to year. But I just want to quickly run through these. Enhancing public safety. The next one evolved a little bit and is expanded now, protecting the environment and preserving open space and agricultural land. Maintaining fiscal responsibility, supporting our youth, seniors and entire community. And fostering a positive organizational culture. Ongoing priorities continue, preserving and cultivating public trust, preserving our community history, enhancing diversity and inclusiveness, and advancing regional initiatives. So besides our ongoing priorities, council has strategic priorities for the next couple So besides our ongoing priorities, council has strategic priorities for the next couple of years. And so the very first one there, bolded fiscal sustainability. Council decided that that one needed to stand out amongst the rest, which of course is even more important now with the pandemic. The other four strategic priorities, affordable housing and homelessness, community engagement and messaging, economic development, as well as transportation. This chart here shows our biannual budget process. And so if we start at the very top in January, so January of 2020, first year. So council had the, the goal setting workshop. And we went through the ongoing priorities and the strategic priorities, which then really helped set the foundations of the development of the budget. And so we developed the budget between February and April. And of course, in March, the shelter in place order went into effect. We continued with budget development. And at the same time, are having to approximate what the impacts of COVID-19 would be. We made our budget available in April, so just last Friday, the recommended budget was made available for the public. And then in May, we'll have our budget workshop, specifically May 15th at nine in the morning. And then in June is the public hearing and budget adoption, and that's scheduled right now for June 17th. And then the budget process continues into the next year. So this would be January of 2021. We'll have our council goal setting workshop. And then in February through June, we'll have an in-depth budget review process, which will include a mid-cycle update, and then we'll have budget adjustments needed. So this is a typical biannual budget process. And, you know, so the question then is, well, what about now and what we're in? Well, as I've mentioned in communications, you know, we presented to you the recommended budget. And it does include, and we'll go through this in detail tonight, it does include the revenue impacts that we project right now, approximate impacts. And we have reflected some expenditure reduction. Between now and the time that we go into the budget workshop, we will have additional budget reductions to share with you. And then the adoption in June and potentially more adjustments after that. And because we're in a very unique, unique occurrence with, with COVID-19, we're going to have to continue to review and update our budget as we learn more. So now, as promised, I'm going to just spend a few minutes talking about our quarterly financials for the month. And really, the quarter ended March 31st, 2020. So first, in looking at the general funds, all in all, revenues are projected to come in less than budget. So by way of timing, the shelter in place order was announced March 16th, and it was in effect March 17th. And even prior to that, there were restrictions that were put in place that really limited gatherings. And so we started really feeling the impacts in mid-March. The next section here looks at the general fund revenues by category. And so you can see the impact to the different categories. So if you look at the budget column, 13.1 for property tax, you kind of compare that to the last column, the year-end projections. So property tax is up. However, sales tax, you can compare the 10.5 with the 9. Similarly, the service charges, 10.3 to 9.4, and that's recreation is a significant part of that. And then, of course, hotel tax or transient occupancy tax down for the fiscal year 1920 from 3.1 to 2.2. Then the other columns to look at is the year-to-date actuals compared to the prior year-to-date. You can kind of see how we're tracking compared to last year. At the bottom there is the expenditures. This includes encumbrances, the money that has not yet been spent, but is either under contract or, or under a purchase order. And so looking at a budget of 44 million, we have a projection of about 43.8 million. And so year-to-date, we're looking at 32.8 million compared to 31.5 million last year. Now going to development services funds, so primarily planning, building, and engineering. Revenues are anticipated to come in below budget. And so if we look at the net impact for the budget, we look at a loss, anticipated a 0.7 million, bringing in less revenue than, you know, we're spending more than we're bringing in for that, for the fiscal year. Now, the year-end projection, as you can see, we're anticipating a difference of 5.3 versus 3.7 for our projection. However, we are expending, we're going to expend less, so 6 versus 5.5 million. So all in all, we're going to spend 1.8 more, 1.8 million more than we're going to bring in this current year. We're going to spend just a couple moments here on the enterprise funds. And so wastewater or sewer first, and then water. And so looking, comparing budget to year-end projections. So all in all, we'll see revenues a little bit higher than we anticipated for sewer. And then we'll see expenditures at the same time, a little bit higher. So all in all, pretty close, spending just 0.1, 1 million more. And then for water, we'll see more revenue. And then we'll also see more expenditures. And now, keep in mind that this, this encompasses the operations. And so not the full part of wastewater and water. Okay, so I am now going to walk us through the budget documents. But before I do that, perhaps, maybe we want to open it up for questions. It's up to you, Mayor, if you want to do that, or just jump right into walking through the flipping book.
Sure, why don't we go ahead and we'll take questions on this specifically. And I'll remind my colleagues just to ask specific questions. And I don't see, there's two hands up. Okay, Councilmember Spring and then Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably a brief question. On Christina, on, on slide number six, you showed kind of the, the cycle of the process. And I, I just wonder if, if that for this year, if you plan on adjusting that cycle, probably stating the obvious, there might have to be a review in the fall at the later end, right? And, and I wonder if you plan on just adjusting that slide accordingly to, so that whoever looks at it doesn't think, well, they're not going to look at it until January again, and once in June, we adopt the budget.
Yeah, you, you are absolutely right. And, and it goes back to some of the comments I was making that this, this cycle is going to be different. And it's going to be a constant look at our budget to actuals as we learn more information. You know, as we adjust our revenue projections, you know, as we become aware of how expenditures might be adjusted that, you know, we're aware of, that we become aware of. So yes, for the May 15th budget workshop, we can put in more, more defined dates on when we anticipate, you know, coming back and building that in.
So are you thinking, and maybe I'm going beyond what you already planned, but are you thinking of having like quarterly reviews or so with the council then?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good question. So right now, we do, we do monthly financial reports. And then the quarterly ones come to the council by way of presentation. And so my anticipated change to that is, I think you're going to hear a lot more from us. Probably those, those monthly reports, I probably will be recommending that those are live, live presentations where we, where we go through the results. And they're going to be probably more detailed in certain areas. And we're going to spend more time looking at the assumptions and why the assumptions have changed from the prior month. So yes, you'll, you'll be hearing a lot about the budget.
And, and I'm sorry.
You'll hear a lot about the budget actual.
Sure. Okay, thank you. With regards to protection, you know, they can go both ways, right? We can be too pessimistic, or one can be too optimistic, or one can be dead on. So what, what tools do you, do you have right now that gives you some, some confidence, right? On the numbers moving forward? Again, you know, it, we had a quick crash, but it can go uphill and then, in a good way, quickly as well, depending on things.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to get into this as, as we, as I go through some slides. But I just to address it now, you know, I, I think you're right, you know, there's, there's a, there's a balance that we need to strike. You know, we, we can't be too pessimistic, we can't be too optimistic, and we cannot rush through the expenditure reductions that are going to be, that are going to need to be made. We need to be strategic. We need to spend the time, you know, to make sure and to think through that they're, that they're the right expenditure reductions to make. And, you know, so that, you know, so that was one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that we got a budget out, you know, according to the schedule that we had established. And to give ourselves the time that we need between now, the budget workshop, and then the, the adoption of the budget. And then even after that, you know, to continue to, to look at how we adjust to the revenue assumption. You know, so in, in, also addressing, you know, where do we look, you know, to see, you know, to kind of gauge our projections, you know? So one is working with our consultants. So for instance, with sales tax, we work with HDL. And HDL works with many, many cities across the state, you know? And so they're looking at all the different industries and making projections. And so, you know, that's one way in which, you know, we have sort of an independent look on, you know, the, you know, what, what we should be assuming right now on, on what we're going to see with the different sectors within sales tax. And then, you know, for property tax, working with the county, you know, connecting with other cities within the county and around the state. As a matter of fact, I think tomorrow, we're going, we're going to be listening to a call that the league is putting on, and they have already done a survey of cities and, you know, what they're anticipating. And, you know, so kind of keeping a pulse, a pulse on, you know, what others are seeing and what, what others are doing. So any other specific questions? If not, I think we'll probably address that more as we kind of talk about the projections that we have so far.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give you one more step. And then moving forward, and also in the context of what you present to, tonight, can you give us some sort of a feeling, are those projections, are those rather on the pessimistic side? Or more on the kind of in-between, or now I'm kind of optimistic, this is what it is? Or could we maybe down the road actually get a table and say, hey, this is worst case, and this is likely, and this is best case? That we, we kind of see the range? Because right now, we're, we're going down, certain numbers down to $100,000, which there's not much of a range, right, in certain areas? But I'm pretty sure there will be ranges. And I wonder if, if you were thinking of possibly providing different scenarios of what could happen down the road?
Yeah, yeah, and we've, we've talked about that as a, as a team. And I'd say that right now, the projections that you're going to hear about and have heard about are, represent our best approximation right now. Now, is there a worst-case scenario? Absolutely, you know, and so I'll walk through, you know, what we're assuming. You know, we're assuming that the shelter in place order is lifted, you know, soon, next few weeks, you know, but that there's going to be restriction, you know? So that changes if Santa Clara County decides to keep the shelter in place order for much longer, you know, and then to have massive restrictions so that our businesses can't go back to where, you know, they were seeing the results, you know, from a, from a revenue perspective that they were seeing and that, you know, results in our sales tax. Same thing with hotels, you know, and, you know, it's really to depend on, you know, when events in the cities are going to pick back up and construction is going to pick back up. So I think your comment along the lines of scenarios and as far as conservative versus pessimistic, you know, we can provide more information, you know, that, that shows that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I personally rather get bad news early than down the road.
Thank you, Councilmember Spring. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, I want to understand, I'm just going to focus on the third quarter report that you just finished talking about. I'm guessing you're going to move into the whole budget. We'll talk about the whole budget later. But in your key general fund revenues chart, you're showing sales tax in a year-end projection of a reduction of 1.5 million. And I'm trying to understand where that comes out of the third quarter and that the, the year-end projection is not just the third quarter projection, but the entire year's projection. So what is, I guess, this epidemic that we're in, the shelter in place, we only affected about two weeks of the third quarter. Do we know what those two weeks look like?
Yeah, may I ask you to step in and talk about what we're seeing in the sales tax?
I realize sales tax is a lagging indicator, we may not really have all that information, but will we be able to focus in on what those two weeks really look like?
Sure, this is Dad Finance Director. The projection, year projection, we see in here 9.0 million from the budget reduction of 1.5 from the budget of 10.5 million. The number is basically provided by our sales tax consultant, HDL. They were based on the case of that if the shelter in place for the state or for the county will remain in place till the end of May. So we use that number as our consultant, and we put that in the current year projection as well as in our budget. And as for the actual sales tax for the third quarter, the California State Department of Taxation, Tax Infusion Station just sent out the email earlier today that their sales tax collection through the, through the end of March, when you mentioned that the includes two weeks of the shelter in place, down about approximately 5.5% from prior year. So that gives you a picture of what happened in two weeks of slowdown compared to the impact to the full quarter as compared to last year, to prior year. But of course, the, for the remainder quarter of this year, they definitely can project that will be more drastically reduced as compared to what's the, what they experienced recently, recently in the first quarter.
Dad, thank you. And I want to make sure I heard you correctly. So what our consultant told us is that sales tax for the third quarter is down 5.5%?
Not that, the, the 5.5% was based on information that sent out email alert from the CDFTA, the California Department of Tax, Tax Infusion Station.
Right.
What they have collected thus far through the first quarter, I mean, through the third quarter, ending March 31st. The 9.99 million for our year-end projection is based on the consultant number that give to us for what we project to receive through the end of this year, fiscal year.
Okay. But we don't yet know a picture of what shelter in place has done to us. We know that, that what two weeks of a, of a single quarter's numbers in whole have reduced things, I guess, 5.5% in sales tax. But we don't know what a picture of shelter in place actually looks like.
That is exactly correct.
We're about five weeks in. Are we going to be able to model what, what one month's worth and then be able to project that over a quarter? And then over six months and over a year?
Yeah, we, we have, you're, you're going to see in a, in a future slide what we're approximating for next year as well as the, the two recommended budget years, we have an approximated revenue loss.
Okay, so I'm probably just getting ahead of myself, and I need to let you actually do your presentation. So that's helpful, thank you, and, and I'll wait to.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. And Mayor Pretten, you took your hand down, so I'm assuming you don't have a question any longer. So then I'll go ahead and ask the mayor to continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm going to now change my screen, and we're going to walk through the flipping book. And so that's the application of the software that we use to make the document a little bit easier to navigate through. Can everybody see a picture of the recommended operating and CIP budget?
We can see the flipping book.
All right, good, okay.
It sounds funny.
Yes, yes, okay. So if you have, at the bottom of the screen, you can see different buttons. And so the first one here is the table of contents. And so when I press that off to the left margin, you have all the different sections. And so what I want to walk through is just a couple highlights. And so table of contents, you can see all the different sections that are, that are in the budget. The recommended budget transmittal letter. So it starts on the right-hand page here. So this is a summary of the budget, what's in it, what's not in it, trends. And so highly recommend, you know, reading through that before you dig into the numbers to kind of have a good overview. And the document before that is a shorter version of that, because those are good. The next section is, is a general information section. And so I want to, if I can remind that screen here, I want to walk through a couple of the different sections here. And so I'm just going to, eventually there'll be table of content pages, so you can easily go to about the city and budget overview. But I'm going to go through that here. So it's about the city, it's just a nice overview about the city and some history. And then general information about the city, sort of fun facts and different informational items. And then we have an overview, and then a timeline of the budget. And then this next section goes into an overview of the budget process and some financial items that really just help one understand the budget. And then we get into planning documents. And so it gives the reader an understanding of what really underlies the work that we do that then formulates our budget. So the general plan, the downtown plan, economic blueprint. And then you'll find in the document links to each of these. So then after that, the next section is fiscal policies. And so this is where we have every fiscal. next section is fiscal policies. And so this is where we have every fiscal policy, you know, that we have here. And so everything from reserve levels for the general fund and other funds to this next page here, page 43, principles to guide the sustainable budget strategy. I mentioned those when I talked about the overview for tonight. And so these were put in place a long time ago, but we'll go through them and just make sure that, you know, the council still believes that those are the principles that we should be, should be using. And so they're all listed here. And then after the fiscal policies, you get into the description of funds. And so, you know, if you want to learn more about each of the different funds, so it starts off with the general fund, the most common fund when people talk about budgets, usually about the general fund. But as you all know, there's a lot more funds. And so this provides a description. So good, good place to learn about each of those. And then the next section is a glossary. And so, you know, we use a lot of acronyms. And so this lays out what each of those acronyms represent. And then eventually we'll have the resolution in here to adopt the budget and appropriations limit. And then the next step, we go to the margin here, the budget summary. And so this is where you're going to have a lot of tables that really bring together the budget. And so let's look at what some of those are. So these particular tables really represent the change in fund balance. And so if we focus for now on the left-hand side here, so this is for fiscal year 2021, so this is the first year of the recommended budget. The top section shows total sources, sources is another word for revenues. And then you have use of funds or expenditures. And then that goes to a variance. And then, and then what happens to the fund balance? So basically you have a starting fund balance, you add in your revenues, you subtract out your expenditures, and then you get to an updated fund balance. And so we do that for each of, each of the fiscal years. And so these particular charts here combine all of the different funds. And then this is basically taking our beginning fund balance as of July of 19. And what it does is then it rolls to the projected balance at the end of the year. So a nice summary chart of every fund, how it starts, and then where we project to land at the end of the year. So we have fiscal year 1920, our current fiscal year. And then we flip to the first year of the recommended budget, fiscal year 2021. And then the same for 2122. And then there's some charts that show general fund and how it changes and then the resources. So these are just good summary charts to look at. And then these pages, so it looks like starting on page 82, go through what are the assumptions that, that we've made in establishing each of the different revenue categories, property tax, sales tax, POT. And we'll spend some time tonight looking at some of these. So we have it for the general fund as well as for some of the other funds. The right, right side here is the summary of revenues and transfers in. And then you just get into more charts on expenditures. Okay. And then the information about internal service charges. And then the chart over here is, is the one that compares us to other municipalities. And then the next section, so going back to your margin over here, this one starts off on personnel. So this whole section is dedicated to personnel. And so as you can see here, we break down into an org chart, we break out personnel by program and it goes for, the columns are fiscal year 1819, so that's last year, that's actual, because it's the year's completed. And then we have the next column fiscal year 1920. And so that's the amended, so where we are right now. And then the two last columns are the recommended budget for fiscal year 21 and 22. And then the following pages just go into detail by position, by department. And so lots of information on personnel. And so then if we go back and look at the margin over here, you have all the different categories. And so let's go to police. And so within police, on the right-hand side here, you'll, and, and this, this setup, this format is the same for each of the different departmental areas. So we'll start off with an appropriation summary. And so total expenditures are broken down by employee services, supplies and services, capital outline, capital outlay, internal service, and then transfers out. And then there's a total line for expenditures. And then the same number, the same total is broken out by program. So for PD, you have administration, field operations, support services, emergency services, special operations, and then dispatch services. And so you can see the totals there are the same, 19.3 million. It's just breaking it down in a different fashion. And then you have full-time equivalents. And so you can see, once again, the same columns, the same years, and then you can look at changes from year to year. And then what you'll find is it's going to break down those different functions. And so this particular function starts off with police administration. To the left here is, is an org chart with all of the different functions. So going back to the page on your right here, so each of the departments, in this case, the division of police administration is broken down with an introduction of the department and then a functional responsibility description, a description of the division. And then if we flip the page, then each of the different sections are going to have all of the accomplishments, the highlight of the accomplishments for fiscal year 19 and 20. And then we get into our goals for 21 and 22. And then we have a financial comments section that basically details out any financial items that we want to bring to the reader's attention, really highlights, differences from other years, but anything that we want to, you know, make sure that we're highlighting. And then you will see on that last page, page 211, a breakdown of, of the dollar amount. And so you can see the first part of this table for police admin is all the different categories, all the different line items, salary, and then supplies, internal service funds, and then transfers. You can see the total there for PD admin. And then if I were to turn the page, then we would get into the next area of this case, it's operations. And so I wanted to walk through that so you can kind of see how each of the different sections are laid out. Now, you might be thinking, okay, well, you know, how, how the budget reductions that we're going to need to make, we're going to have less revenue, you know, so you're going to see some impacts of that in these sections. And we're going to continue to update these sections to reflect potentially the goals that we might be taking out, you know, based on recommended budget reductions. And so we will continue to provide updates and you'll see updates for May 15. Now, after that, so if we look back at the margin over here, that goes all the way through engineering and utilities. And then you get into internal service funds. And so this is the areas of employee assistance, IT, GIS, building maintenance and so forth. So all of our internal funds. So you're going to find financial pages on those. And then you have a section called special analysis. So included in this section is our strategic priorities. And then we have a section here on our general fund six-year forecast. And so it goes year by year. And then you're going to have charts also on our purse. So then we get to the CIP. And so there's the title page right there on the right-hand side. And we're going to go into detail in a bit on our slides, but just in looking at how this is laid out, I want to kind of walk through this. So you can see on the left-hand side, a table of contents for this piece of the budget, which is our CIP. And so you can see the, the different colors here for the different areas. And so you have parks and recreation projects, and then a listing, each, each row here is, is a project. And so you'll see the page number for it. And then the number right after the page number is the project number. So after parks and rec, you have public facilities, storm drainage, streets and roads, wastewater, and then water. And then the, the other part here is the use of CIP fund for CIP projects. And so what this provides is it's broken down by fund and how our projects are funded. And so looking at a couple of pages here, so we, we then have a program overview on, as well as this first page here on the left. And then this is another helpful chart here on page four of this CIP on the right-hand side, another summary. And so you can see, once again, the same color coding for the different categories. And then it's broken down by years. So we have six years that we're representing. So we're required to show five. And once again, when we do a two-year budget, we like to have six years of CIP so that when you're in the second year, you still have five years of capital budget. And so you can see totals by category and then totals in total. So for 2021, our capital program is 48.9 million. And you can see all the way out, the total for the six-year recommended CIP of 190 million. The bottom part, this project funding sources goes by the same years. And then this shows it by the funding source. So what fund is funding each of these different projects? Flipping the page, that just continues on the left-hand side. And then you're going to see the same color coding to kind of keep things helpful and in, in ease of reviewing. And so then this provides a summary of parks and recreation projects. And so once again, same project code, same projects over the six-year period. And at the bottom, you're going to see how they're funded. You're going to see the same thing for each of the different categories, public facilities, storm drainage, streets and roads, wastewater, and then water. Then this page on the right here is our unfunded, partially funded, or delayed projects. And so you'll want to look at that. And, and we'll go through that in more depth when we do our budget chart. And then what you get into, same color coding here. So by seeing the green, you know, it's parks and recreation. You can see that right below that as well. We have a project number there at the top, the department, council priorities that it supports, and then the location. And then typically we'll have a picture to kind of help give some context, help the reader see what's being done or proposed. And then the project description, the project justification, and then the strategic planning documents. And so you'll have these same categories for each of the different projects. And then continuing on the left side here, you have the expenditure schedule. So this just shows the project cost. In this case, it's $2 million. How it's being funded, you can see park impact fund. And then you'll have any sort of financial comments that we want to point out, any sort of highlights. And then what's the estimated project schedule? And so that's broken out between planning, project design, construction, and project closeout. And then the operating cost impact. So as we talked about before, you know, we, you know, in some cases get grants or, or we have impact funds and we have funding to build a particular project or embark on a project. But we want to make sure that we describe what the impact is going to be in the future and what the impact to our operating costs is going to be. So we address that with each of our projects. And so this next page on the right starts an additional project. Okay, so I want to now go to, I'm scrolling down on my margin on the left-hand side to the very bottom category here, which is funding. And so on the right-hand side here, this starts a new section. And as I mentioned, you know, we're looking at the table of content. This now breaks it out by fund. And so you can see at the top here, park impact, so fund 301. It provides a fund description, how this fund generates money for capital investment, what are the limitations and other important factors of the fund, what are the goals for the capital investment. And then it breaks out the projects that are being funded by this particular fund. And so you can see, in this case, we have several projects that are going to be funded by park impact. And as you'll, as you'll see in reviewing the capital improvement program, some of our projects have more than one funding source. And so that continues. So on the left-hand side here, you'll see, once again, the park impact fund. And this provides a fund balance roll forward. And so you'll see the, the first column here is the beginning fund balance. And then you have the revenue, so the source of the funds, the money coming into this fund. So this notes that this is an AB 1600 fund, or we get these funds from developer impact fees. And then we also, what comes into this fund is non-AB 1600, in this case, RDCS funds that are being applied to this project. And that row doesn't have any dollars in it. And then revenues other, so we know if we're getting grants or there's other sources of funding. And then the next row here is expenditures for CIP projects. And so you'll see a dollars there. And then other expenditures. And then you get to an ending funding, ending fund balance. And so in coming to that fund balance, if we start at the top there, 4.1 million is how we anticipate starting this, you know, this next budget cycle. The revenue that's going to come in, so that 1.6 million, as well as the 5.4 million. And then the money going out, the expenditures, the 10.7 million, as well as the 148,000. So when you take all those sources and uses into consideration with a beginning fund balance, we have an ending fund balance of 306,000. And so you can see that number then rolls to the top to become the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 2021. And that carries out all the way through the six years of the CIP budget. And so at the end, assuming that the projections hold true for revenues and expenditures, we would have 3.3 million at the end of this CIP cycle. And so you'll see the very same for all of the different funds. And so now, Mr. Mayor, I would just say now would be a good time to just ask any questions related to the table of contents and how our budget document is, is constructed.
Okay, so questions on the table of contents and how this, the document is constructed. So I will ask Mayor Pretend, Marquez Beltran, if she has any questions on those topics?
I do not. Is my hand still up, Mayor? I apologize.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a...
Sorry about that.
No problem. Then I'll go to Councilmember McCain.
So I don't know about the content. Are, are we going to have, have a continued discussion on this? Or what is this, the, the?
Well, we're breaking this up into parts. And so if you have any specific questions on the table of contents and what was discussed so far, then we'll go ahead, you can go ahead and ask them.
Yeah, no, mine is mostly just about approach and philosophy. I'm not sure if that's a good, this is a good time for that.
Yeah. And so for that, let's go through our slides for that, because then we'll have some information to provide as far as that goes.
I'm sorry, I...
Christina, you're cutting out a little.
You're Christina, you're cutting out really bad.
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. So what I was suggesting is let's, let's go through the other slides because we will talk about assumptions and philosophies. And I just wanted to make sure that the council sort of understood how the budget document is laid out and, and, you know, that, the format, basically.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
I can wait.
All right. Councilmember Spring, do you have any questions on the, the table of contents and how the document is set up?
Yes, and it's also related to the process. So, and Mayor, Mayor, maybe you can chip in. So for tonight, we're, we're not going to drill into the details. We'll do that during the workshop. Is my understanding correct? So we're more getting an introduction to the different documents and so on. And pretty much the detailed discussion and questions I want to, we'll handle at the workshop. Just want to make sure my understanding is correct.
That is correct.
That's the question.
Okay. All right.
Any further questions?
I don't know. There are no hands up.
Okay. So I am going to stop sharing this document and go back to our PowerPoint.
Which others made the comment that, what a fantastic document for members of the public to be able to look up and answer any questions. This is, that's great. And I'll break my own rule by making a comment. I apologize. I was just so impressed.
Okay. Give me one more moment, please. Okay, so you should be seeing a picture of recommended operating and CIP budget.
You got it.
Okay. All right. So let's get into some of the details. So this slide here is a summary of the recommended budget for the two fiscal years, 2021 and 2122. So once again, the first period will start on July 1st of this year and will end on June 30th of 2021. Likewise, the next, the second year will start July 1st of 2021 and then end on June 30th of '22. It's broken out between our operating budget as well as our capital improvement program budget. And then at the bottom, you can see the total recommended budget for each year. And most of the variability between the two numbers, as you can see, is related to the capital improvement program, you know, which really just depends on timing of projects and when cash comes in for the projects. The next slide here brings together the sources and uses by fund type. And so you can see, if we look at the rows, each of the different fund types, general fund, development services fund, special revenue, capital, debt service, enterprise, internal service funds, and agency funds. And then a subtotal for each of those. And then use of reserves and fund balance, and then city WAT. And so same two years, we have the sources or the revenues. And then the next column is the uses. And then the variance column is the difference between the sources and the uses. So if we focus in for a moment on the general fund, you can see the 3.8. So that shows... So that shows a deficit in the first year, which means that the use, the uses, is higher than the sources. 46 million is more than the sources of 42 million. And so same thing for 2122. And this chart also captures the full-time equivalents. And so you can see that broken out by fund and total citywide, 193.5. And we'll have more slides in the, in the future about kind of personnel over time. Okay, so this, this goes right into the personnel. And so you can see for fiscal year 1920, so the third from the right, the current fiscal year that we're in, the solid blue line, and then the two out years, so shows the same amount, the same personnel of 193.5. So you can see that we are lower than we were at the Great Recession. At the highest was at 202.75. So that was fiscal year 2008, 2009. And this chart also shows population. So you can see over time, our population and how, you know, the staffing hasn't really kept up. You know, our population has continued to go up and we haven't been able to, you know, have more, you know, staff on board to, to, you know, as population grows. We do assume for fiscal year '21 and '22, a 2% population growth. And so that just represents the 10-year average. The next chart here is a pie chart. And so this represents all of our funds, and it breaks it down by category. And so you can see some of the most significant areas, project expenditures, salaries, which really represents personnel costs, so salaries and benefits, and then supplies and services, and then the other different areas. And this is in millions as, as well. So now let's focus in for a moment on the general fund. So this chart shows how monies come into the general fund. And so you can see here that the primary source of revenue is our taxes. And so for the general fund for this year, for this coming 2021, it's 28.2 million for taxes. And so that represents 61% of our general fund resources for fiscal year 2021. And that's followed by current services, 9.8 million or 21%. And recreation is the most significant item in current services. The next chart here shows our discretionary expenditures. So really what you're looking at represents the expenditures for each of these different categories, net of any revenues that are brought in. And so you can see that police and fire represent 84% of our discretionary expenditures and the total is 28.4 million. And then you can see the other categories there. So let's spend some time talking about the fiscal impacts of COVID-19. So the first slide here goes into some assumptions on, on what we've made so far in COVID-19. So the first assumption is that we are assuming that the shelter in place ends in early summer. And as I mentioned earlier, that we're not going to go back to how things were, you know, before mid-March, but rather there's going to be a, you know, there's going to be restrictions in place, which for us means phasing back services and programs. And so that's reflected in our revenue assumption. We assume reduced revenues and increased expenditures. And so as the transmittal letter talks about, there are some similar similarities between what we're seeing now as what we saw in the Great Recession. But there's also some, some differences. And we've talked about how, you know, with the Great Recession, I think there was a bit more timing, time to prepare, you know, whereas with the shelter in place, you know, the impacts were felt immediately and things came to, you know, a very quick halt. And so looking at the major revenue sources, so first, general fund. And so it notes included, which means that we've included these assumptions in our budget. Property tax, sales tax, recreation services, and hotel tax. And we talked a little bit about, at the last meeting, I kind of went into some of these categories. But just to, just to reassure you, we're going to have slides on each of these where we'll go into the dollar amounts and sort of what the assumptions are. And then development services fund. So we have included the impact of the development services revenue losses. And then there's also going to be impacts to special revenue and capital funds. We talked about that by way of gas tax and the VTA Measure B and SB1. So we have not yet included any anticipated reduction in those areas. And so as we get closer to our budget workshop, you know, hopefully we'll have some more information about those categories. And so now let's look at major revenue sources, you know, by category. And so this first one shows property tax loss over the three fiscal years. And so your, the next few charts are going to show the same periods of time. So for fiscal year 1920, this really represents mid-March through the end of fiscal year, June 30th, and then goes out for the next two recommended budget years. And so a total of 0.8 million, 0.8 million is what we represent in revenue loss, what we show for revenue loss from COVID-19. Now, property tax, there's a lag effect, you know. So really, when there's an economic downturn, usually, you know, it takes about 18 months to feel it in the property tax category. We do anticipate that we're going to see in 1920, property tax overall is going to be higher than budgeted, as we, as we showed earlier when we were looking at the third quarter results. We, we do show a 0% growth rate in the forecast. Now, property tax, the, the loss that we're going to see is really going to be dependent upon how long the shelter in place order is in effect, how long the restrictions are in effect. And what, what we're showing really, the most significant impact is in fiscal year '21, '22. And that really represents the anticipated Prop 8 temporary reductions. And so property owners can request temporary reassessments. And this represents what we think at this point that, that we might see. Moving on to sales tax. And so over the three years, we anticipate $4.8 million in revenue loss. This is based on what we've been in consultation with our HDL consultant. This excludes the governor's assistance program. And so there's a couple of different parts here that are based upon sales tax revenue that businesses have. We are going to see a delay, you know, a timing difference. But this, the, the results here don't reflect that. And then recreation. So this, this assumes $2.1 million. It assumes that our facilities are going to reopen in phases with reduced hours. And it assumes a decrease in membership as well as registrants. Now, you know, we, earlier we talked, you know, about, you know, some of the assumptions and, you know, what it's going to mean for the different categories. And, you know, if the restrictions are severe, you know, this, this will impact this number and it can, and impact this number, you know, in a bad way, you know, so that such that that $2.1 million has the possibility of being much bigger, you know. So this relates to our facilities, the CRC, the Aquatic Center, also, you know, represents our facilities and facilities rentals. But based on our best approximation right now, we're at $2.1 million as a revenue loss. Now, looking at hotel tax, which is also called transient occupancy tax, we're looking at a $1.7 million loss over the three years. And so we're assuming, and we're working with an occupancy rate right now of 20% and having that 20% return to normalcy over, over a period of time. You know, so it's going to take, to get back to normal, it's going to take, you know, a reopening of our outdoor sports center, seeing, you know, teams out there, seeing meets at our aquatic center, having construction pick up in town, having visitors come back and feel comfortable with vacationing. And so like the other categories, you know, this is subject to being larger than 1.7 million, you know, if looking at it from a pessimistic standpoint. But once again, this represents our best approximation right now. Looking at development revenue, so this is Fund 206. This is not the general fund, but this represents building, engineering, as well as planning. And so we're anticipating a $2.8 million loss. And so this assumes a 23% reduction in our current fiscal year. And this assumes a 25% reduction in projects and associated revenues in fiscal year 2021. And once again, you know, this is a category that, you know, could change. This is based upon our projections at this time. And as we'll go into in further slides, you know, while this is not a general fund, fund, you know, it's, it's separate, it's Fund 206, we're anticipating a loss in our current fiscal year. So it would necessitate a short-term loan from the general fund. And so in that sense, it has a direct impact on our general fund. And so this next slide here summarizes and consolidates each of the slides that we just went through. So the anticipated revenue loss by category for the three fiscal years for each of the different revenue types. And this includes Fund 206 of the development services. So all in all, for the three years, as of right now, we're anticipating a $12.2 million loss. Okay, so what expenditure adjustments have been included in this recommended budget? So one is we've included the recreation facility closures. The, the assumption also is that we have a hiring freeze. And so that is for all non-public safety positions. And so what that means is as we have vacancies, we will freeze the, the position and not go and recruit for that position. Now, could there be exceptions to that? Absolutely. But the general rule is that there will be a hiring freeze for non-public safety positions. The recreation cost reductions are based on a gradual reopening. In our expenditures, we've taken out the assumption that we'll have a, an election, an election amount for contract services. And so, you know, this is above and beyond, you know, what we would normally need to budget for our council positions, but rather for, say, a measure. And then the next one is a drawdown on general liability insurance reserve. And so we have over time accumulated funds in our general liability fund. And so we have moved some of those funds to cover unemployment. And so we have teammates, part-time temporary teammates that have been furloughed because primarily due to the recreation closures. And so we are going to see an increase in unemployment. We are self-insured for unemployment. And so we're going to use some of this liability insurance reserve to help cover the cost of that unemployment cost. And then lastly, we have pulled out some of the building maintenance projects in the recommended budget. The next slide shows the COVID-19 impact to our pension cost. And so right now, we've been kind of keeping an eye on PERS and they've been providing information about what the rate of return that they're seeing, how that's going to impact employers. And so once again, this isn't something that's going to hit us immediately. But you can see the orange bars here for fiscal year '23, as well as for '24. Those are orange. And so we approximate, we have an approximate 0.9 million over two years. And so what this represents is additional employer contribution as a result of them not seeing their anticipated discount rate of 7%. And this assumes that after the shelter in place is lifted, after the restrictions are lifted, that they'll start to see closer to their anticipated discount return. And so those positive years will then offset, hopefully, what they're seeing now. Okay, this next chart brings together the general fund, and it's for the six-year forecast period. And so looking down on the left-hand side, the vertical axis is the percentage reserve or fund balance for the general fund. The horizontal axis represents the years. And so we start with our year-end projection for 1920, and then we move into our two recommended years, and then we move into the forecast. And so you can see at the top, we start off this current fiscal year with $18 million in our fund balance or in our reserves. And so that represents 41% of our revenues. And then the dashed green line represents where we were at our goal setting. And so you can see, if you look at the year-end projection in the first couple, the first two years, the recommended budget year, we stay pretty flat, you know. So we don't need to use our reserves. But then after a while, we have to start using our reserves. And if you were to continue that line past the six years, you of course would run into and hit the red line, which is our fund balance goal of 25%. The blue line represents the fund balance minimum level of 15%. And then the orange represents where we're at today. And so you can see a couple benchmarks. So one is we anticipate a 15.9, $15.2 million number for a year-end projection for 1920. And you can see that we're going to hit the fund balance goal. So we'll dip below the 25% during our '21, '22 year. And so you can see for '21, '22 that we're at 8.8 million. And then if we continue on, that continues to go down. And of course, it goes past our fund balance minimum level reserve of 15%. And so that happens between '23 and '24. And then if you keep going down, at the last year, the fiscal year '25, '26, we are at 0.6 million. And so this graph, you know, of course loudly shouts that we have more expenditure reductions that we need to make. And, you know, it shows that we are using our general fund reserve this current fiscal year and that we need to make expenditure reductions so that we can stay in line with our reserve policy. I think that kind of concludes my remarks on those, on that slide so far. So Mayor, do you want to go ahead and ask, ask if there's any questions on the slide so far? Or I can just continue?
Sure. Are there any questions on the slides so far? And I'm not seeing...
I have a question on this, this particular slide. I can wait if it's not.
Okay, so Councilmember McKay put his hand up. Are you having difficulty putting your hand up? On your computer? I didn't see your hand come up. Mayor Protan, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to Mayor Protan.
I'm sorry. Yes, there's a message. I might, I'll, I'll message Michelle.
Okay, so I'll, I have Councilmember McKay, then Councilmember Spring, and then I will go to, to the Mayor Proten. So Councilmember McKay, your question regarding the slides so far?
Yeah, and actually, it's on this slide itself. The, we see the 15% reserve fund balance. Is that a magic number? Does something happen when we go below 15?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Dat to share with you how the 25% works and what happens if we dip below that? And then what happens if we dip below the 15%? And this policy is included in the budget document in that fiscal policy section. But I'm going to ask him to kind of talk through that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Christina. I believe the reserve policy was set by the council back in 2009. So what happened if our general fund reserve balance set below 25%? Is that requires the, the, the council and the management team to come up the, the corrective action in the next budget cycle. For instance, if we anticipate the project, the reserve to top below 25% this year for the next budget year, it requires us to make some correction to make sure that the lies stay above 25%. If the lies anticipated goal below 15%, which is the minimum reserve level, it requires the city to come up with the corrective action within 90 days.
Okay, so it's, it appears to me that those are council-established criteria. But are there institution, you know, bank institutions? Is there any lending institutions? Are there, are they looking at our solvency and then also at our reserves? And will that affect our bond ratings, our credit ratings, all that stuff? And that, so I was more along those lines. Does it have that kind of impact?
Yes. Oh, yes, definitely. The investors, as you know, that we do have bonds, outstanding investor looking at this. And in addition to future... And in addition to future investor, if we intend to go to debt market, look at this thing very carefully. They look at the, the health of the cities finances based on what, how much cash money we have left and how long to survive. So basically, if we remain, they consider like you have enough cash liquidity to survive additional one quarter or more. Consider adequate or more. If you, I mean, don't have enough cash or reserve to survive less than a quarter, then that would definitely, it's a red hair, it definitely couldn't put on a red alert.
Okay, so the 15 and the 25% really aren't, don't have, aren't any special markers, just the general health of the city's budget, then that's what they're looking at. Outside, people outside of Morgan Hill are looking at, and us.
Yes, and us too. And I mean, just as one component, when they look at our, I mean, bonds rating, they look at the, they look at a lot of other factors as well, like the, I said, the city management, they look at the governance, they look at the forecast, how we doing based on revenue diversification wise and how we contain, how we address, whatever disruption that may come to us.
Okay, how well we react to things. Okay, that was my question. Thank you very much.
And Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, dear, Christina, I have a question related to the property tax slide that you showed earlier. They're saying you're projecting losses. And I, I'm not quite sure I understood why. I was looking kind of at property taxes generally. There's, the values are still going up for properties. So why would we expect the drop of revenues? Now, yes, it might be that some people got a deferral, will pay later or so, or might have a problem paying. But generally, that's not the trend. It's not a crash of housing at this point like we had in 2009.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that in the sense that the number would be a lot bigger, you know, if this, you know, was like the Great Recession. And so, you know, this is based upon conversations with the county, you know, and stuff that they, you know, information that they put out, you know, to anticipate some property, you know, reassessments. I think it's going to sort of be, you know, almost a, I mean, in some ways it's direct, but it's more almost indirect, you know, because, you know, it's not, you know, we're not in this, you know, this pandemic is causing major economic, economic issues. But, you know, it's not, you know, related to property tax values. But nonetheless, that we're anticipating that it is going to lead to some level of, you know, recession above and beyond, you know, what we're seeing from the pandemic, which then leads to the copy reduction. Dad, would you want to add anything to that?
Yes, sure. You look at this chart, basically loss is, you correct the Councilmember Spring that this is not actual loss based on reduction in assessed value wise, but rather a loss compared to what we projected and what we sent to the council at the goal setting in January. So if you look at January goal setting, you look at what we protect in property tax, we coming in this year and the next couple of years versus the effect of the pandemic have on the property taxes. What we were checking this year and next year is that's a minor deduction from what we have forecast in January based on a reduction in supplemental revenue. This supplemental revenues, we know is based on the U.S. state transaction and desk transaction are all due to the settlement place order. But for the second year, 2122, we could expect some reduction compared to what we forecast in January that based on the, the anticipated increase in number of property appeal. It's true that in, back in January, we forecast that in 2122, we would project the growth of 4%. So the, the 600,000 or 0.6 million reduction in January reflect the growth of 4% down to 0%.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the other question I have is kind of related to the last slide you showed, there may be a follow-up on my colleague's question. Yeah, that, that one, the, you know, some people talk about rainy day funds, but my understanding of having reserve always was that there are research in place for the bad days and the bad times. Well, if this is not the bad time, then what is it? So, so to me, it doesn't make sense to keep up a high level of reserve when you're going through the bad times that you actually wanted to be prepared for, and I think we are.
Yeah, no, that's a good comment, you know, you know, to add to that. This came up at the webinar that the chamber hosted, it was Q and A with the mayor. And so one of the community members asked about that, you know, are we going to use the reserves? And so, you know, I gave the answer that, you know, we already are, you know, because we're going to be spending more this year than we're bringing in. Now, in addition to that, you know, this chart only represents, you know, what's in the budget, you know, what's budgeted for. I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides here to this slide. This slide used to show $7 million. And so above and beyond, you know, what's reflected in our reserves, we have not yet included in the budget, the items that are on this slide. So the need for additional police resources, the staff with third fire stations, building maintenance and pavement rehab, street maintenance, you know, and the fact that we're losing a million dollars from, you know, not getting revenue from our RDCS, you know. And so now kind of going back to the slide, you know, so those, those aren't programmed into our expenditures, you know. So we already knew we were dealing with those unfunded needs. And then to layer on the impacts of COVID-19, you know, it complicates that, you know. So, you know, in my opinion, can we use and should we use the reserves, you know, to help us weather through what we're going through? Yes, but not fully. I mean, we're going to have to make some significant expenditure reductions, you know, so that we don't run out of money over time.
Right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on this slide right here and the question about the policy, I, you know, I remember when we put together the fiscal policy that we act under now. The 15% line, one of the importance, one of the reasons we established that line, going back to Councilmember McKay's question, is we have to have a certain amount of cash on hand simply for cash flow purposes at any given time. We don't get cash in the door every day or a paycheck every week. We get it on a rolling quarterly basis for some, for some of the revenues that we have and on other timelines and other of our revenue basis. So that 15% is, is really about how we manage our cash flow on a day-to-day basis. And that's why we set that at that 15% in addition to all the things that Dad talked about with our rating agencies. So from a, you know, a practicality standpoint, it's about cash flow as much as anything else. But I wanted to, well, first of all, I want to understand, we're going to have a conversation about those fiscal policies as a part of this presentation as we move through?
We're planning to delve deeper into the 25% and 15% of what we are asking.
Well, no, not necessarily, but let me just ask the question, and if it makes sense to hang on to it, that's fine too. Dad talked about when we dip below the 25% level, as this chart says we will do sometime in the 2021 recommended fiscal year budget, that the policy would kick in to say that action would be required in the next budget cycle. When that fiscal policy was put in place, we did annual budgets and not two-year budgets. So is the next budget cycle the next two-year cycle? Or would it be the next year, meaning that we need to put things in place now because we're adopting a two-year budget?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point that you're bringing up, you know. We now do a two-year budget, but once again, we're going to be reevaluating our numbers constantly. And so, you know, I mean, I think that is a policy discussion, but I think that we really need to do more in this, you know, in anticipation of the year ahead and not so much the two years. But while having the longer-term view. So I think we need to make some changes now that will impact the next two years.
Yeah, I mean, I would interpret that policy to say, in the second year of this budget cycle, we need to have made the changes necessary to reverse that dipping below the 25% level. And if those changes occur in the first year of the budget cycle and carry over in the second, that's fine. But by the second, those changes should be in place, is the way that that policy would read to me. So, okay, and I want to ask questions about some of.
Councilmember Carr, you're going out. You're, can you hear? That's, can you hear?
Yep, my, my apologies. Can you hear me a little bit better, Mayor?
You're, yeah, no, you're going in and out. My screen is frozen right now.
No, I just had a pop up. My internet connection was slowed, so maybe I apologize.
We can hear you, we can hear you now.
Okay. To some of the assumptions that we have made, both COVID and then some of the adjustments that we've already included, I want to learn a little bit more and perhaps if I need to take this offline, that's fine as well. But this drawdown on general liability insurance reserve. And if I understood you correctly, Christina, that's to help shore up our self-insured unemployment fund. But I'd be curious as well, will we get through this process some kind of, how will we understand how we're predicting what liabilities we may have moving forward? And does this COVID crisis bring us the potential of new liabilities that we wouldn't have predicted otherwise?
Yeah, Dad, would you share what our reserve level is for our liability fund? Let's start off there.
Okay, let me look at the reserve level actual numbers, but I believe is over 1.2 million as of now. And the policy calls for a minimum reserve for that general liability of four times the self-insured amount, which is about 400,000.
So the minimum.
Listening, if I have incorrect, please correct me. And what, what, what we propose in this budget is a drawdown from 1.2 or 1.3 down to 800. So that would remain still higher than the minimum reserve requirement.
We would still have double in our, in our liability fund.
Okay, what the minimum requirement is. And, you know, and I'm happy to take it offline, but I'd like to hear maybe from Don, what are, if we're projecting any new liabilities as a result of this crisis, whether they be general liabilities, workers' comp liabilities. I realize that's a different category, but what we're anticipating along those lines. And like I said, we can, I can take that offline or we can get something like. Let's see, you said that we're projecting at this point, and I realize that it's just a projection that shelter in place will end early summer. What do we mean by early summer? July 1, when this budget actually begins?
We don't have, so it's, we don't have a specific date. But I mean, I wouldn't say it's July 1, I'd say it's sometime between, sometime in June.
Okay, so even before this budget takes place, we leave.
Afterwards.
That shelter in place will be over, but we'll still be under some kind of restrictions.
Yeah, and once again, best guess at this point, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to know more, you know, because the anticipated shelter in place is supposed to be lifted after May 3. And so I would imagine we're getting pretty close to, you know, a reevaluation of that date.
Okay.
Christina, if I could jump in. Full-based life budget here, especially cell tax and other recreation and property tax, we anticipate that the shelter in place will remain till the end of May. So it should be, should be lifted in early June. So if got shortened or extended, then we definitely going to revise our forecast.
So really, I guess, it should say not, not early summer since summer, I guess, really starts June 17th to June 20th.
Thank you.
Any other questions before?
Okay, no, Mayor Pro Tan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christina. That was excellent walking us through this. I have three questions. I want to start with this one because we're here and I think I'll just make it easier. But my question is, when we're looking at the reserve balance, and we obviously, we need to have some reserve balance. But is, you know, we, there's this policy of the 25% and then there's, you don't want to go below the 15%. Is there some way that we could look at, for example, COVID has reduced our expected revenues by a certain percentage? And then we use that percentage from our reserve fund? Because, you know, some of these are, are known unfunded needs that we've been dealing with for quite some time. They've, they've come through with us and throughout history. And we were planning on trying to address those in some different ways and, you know, creative, different ways and getting the public involved in that. But that, that really is something that's different than COVID, than, than the emergency that's happening here. And so when I think about, you know, people asking, are we looking to use the, the general fund for any type of assistance? I believe that they're asking for this emergency that's happening. And so can we look at that proportionately, what that impact is into what we could use from our general fund? With, you know, staying within, be above the 15%, say, or some other nominal number that we decide is kind of really the threshold we want to go to?
I think you're, you're asking, can some of this reserve be used for general, could some of the general fund reserve be used for small business support? Is that the question?
No, I'm saying can some of this, I mean, we're going to have impacts, what is it, of 3.7 million we've identified from COVID? And so.
12, 12 million.
I can't hear, I'm sorry, hear.
So we.
2 from the loss to the budget from COVID-19.
That's over the three years though, right?
Correct.
So I'm talking about for this one year. So for example, let's just take this year. And I think it's 3.7, is that right for this year?
So fiscal year 1920 include development services, we're looking at 4.6 million.
Can you say, sorry, 4. something?
Yeah.
Okay, so would we be able to use that 4.6 from our reserve fund without taking us, you know, below this 15% is really my question.
Okay, so repeat again, can we use, if we reserve to cover the fiscal year 1920 impact?
Right, right. So that we are able to, we're looking, if we're just looking at COVID alone and we're not looking at the unknown or the known unfunded needs, we know we need a fire station. We know we need more police officers. We've known that for years that we have those needs. But right now, we're talking about COVID. We're looking at having this $12 million over three years impact. But if we look at just this year, you're saying it's 4 point, I think I have 4.4. I think I heard 4.6, so 4.6 that we need to cover. Are we not able to cover the 4.6 from our reserve fund without going below the 15%?
Yeah, so we're currently at 18 million. And, you know, with COVID, we would continue to drop. So we would then go down from 18 million to, you know, subtract out 4.6.
And what percentage would that bring us to?
Dad, can you calculate that in the background, you know, while I make some comments on that?
So basically, right now, we have, as the chart shows right here, we have about 18 million and we couldn't use about 3.8. The 4.6 is comprised of the Fund 206. Currently, Fund 206 has some money in there. So we have to utilize the whole balance in Fund 206 and we have to fund some of deficit, cash shortfall this year for Fund 206. We'll be tapping to reserve a 3 point, I think, 3.8 million. So that would bring us down to 15.2. And then that would still remain above 25% level.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted.
A slide that we're going to show a little bit later. So this kind of puts it in dollars, the, the fund reserve. So you can see that the blue chart represents where we're at now. And so we're going to have a deficit at year end of 2.6, you know, just based on where we, where we've been. So we thought we would have 0.1, right, if you look at the bottom chart. But based on the COVID impacts and, you know, everything else, we're going to, we're going to have a loss of 2.6 this year. So I, I mean, I would encourage us to not just look at this year, you know, because we need to and we have. because we need to and we have implemented some measures to mitigate some of the impact of the revenue right now. You know, because at some point, you, you know, you have to stop some of the expenditures when you don't have the revenue coming in, you know. And so I think we really have to have more of a long-term view than just this year at hand, you know, if that makes sense.
Yes, I mean, I just, I'm just realizing, as we say, we, we don't really know what that means for the future. We don't, we don't know much, we don't know how long this is going to go on. We don't know how long the recovery will take. We don't know if the value of homes will be impacted like it was in 20, or if it will stay and hold their value and then we don't have reassessments, we just don't know. And so that's why I'm only taking one year now, because it seems like there's so much unknown. Okay, and then there's two slides, the first one is on page 19. On here.
This slide?
That one, yes, thank you. I wanted to know if we could get the numbers on this chart, I think it's such a great chart, for each of the spending categories, because this is truly the discretionary funds that we're able to, to work with. So if we could get an amount, we've got, you know, so we've got the 60% and 24%, but if we could get amounts on all of those, that would be such a great tool, I think, quickly for people to reference.
Yeah, and so I, I just want to make sure everybody understands how this chart works. And so, you know, if you look at, so what this does is it takes the net expenditure. So if you look at every single expenditure that each of these categories have, and then you back out the revenue, then you have what's listed here, you know. So police and fire, they bring some level of revenue, but not a whole lot, you know. And so most of our discretionary expenditures are on police and fire. If you look at recreation above that, you know, this number represents basically the, what our general fund covers for recreation and community service programs for which we don't bring revenue in for, right? And, you know, and then as you kind of go down the line, but yeah, we could look to do dollars on this chart as well.
That would be great. And then if you go to, and I think it's page 22, which is, or maybe not, it's the development, I apologize, it's not 22, it's the development fund page. Slide 27, yes, thank you. So essentially, we will need 1.2 million from the discretionary funds from the general fund to cover this? And then we'll need the 1.3 million next year.
So, no, so we're going to see in the later slide that the amount that's needed from the general fund is not all of this 1.2 million. The amount is lower for 1920.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, I, you don't have to raise your hands on the, on the participants, but if anyone wants to take a break, because we've been at this for over two hours now, just raise your hand. Okay, oh, Mr. McKay, okay, so why don't we just go ahead and take a five-minute break and come back at around, so Christina, would you go ahead and continue?
Okay, great. So this slide I, I brought up when we were talking about the general fund reserve. And so this, it shows the numerical rule forward of the fund balance for the general fund. And so the beginning balance for this year is at about 18 million. I'm going to add in the revenues, the expenditures, and then goes down to what the deficit is, you know, that we're spending more than we're bringing in to the tune of 2.6 million, and then the ending balance of 15.3 million. And so you can see that for 20, 20, 21 and 21, 22. And based on all that, we go down to 8.9 million by the end of the two years. And that's in comparison to what you see below where we were at, at the full setting. And so then we move into our unfunded needs. I did quickly run through this. But once again, this is, has been updated from, it was at 7 million. So the primary update comes from the pavement rehab number that Chris shared with us from the infrastructure report, that 1.1 million, that has gone down, as well as the building maintenance number. So in looking now, a little bit more detail on the development services fund. And so for this current fiscal year, we have a projected loss of most fourth quarter revenue, and that's due to the shelter in place order. We've realized some expenditure reductions, and those have mainly been in contract services, as well as conferences and, and meetings. And so I mentioned that we have a loan that will have this fiscal year, so much earlier than anticipated, from the general fund to the tune of 425,000. Now, looking at the first year of the recommended budget, we assume a reduction in projects and, which leads to about a 25% reduction in revenue as well as expenditures. And so looking at expenditure reductions on part-time temporary staffing, as well as contract services. And as we've talked about before, we need to do a fee study. And so we anticipate doing that sooner rather than we, we originally anticipated. And so as soon as the shelter in place order is lifted, because logistically it'd be very difficult to do this, prior to that, we will do an in-depth fee study. Not going to fix all of our problems, you know, there's certain fees that we, you know, won't be able to get, you know, to full cost recovery, but nonetheless, it will definitely help. And so based on our current projections, in fiscal year 21, we're looking at about 1.5 million in a projected loan from the general fund. Now, once again, we're going to come back in May and we're going to have some recommendations and some expenditure reductions that are going to lead to a smaller number than 1.5 million, but that's where we're at right now. And so then we look at 21, 22, 900,000, as far as a projected loan goes from the general fund. And then that following year and onwards, we look to repay the general fund loan once development services starts picking back up. Looking at water and wastewater. So we haven't included any significant adjustments at this time on water. We do anticipate reduced consumption in the commercial industrial area and increased consumption in residential consumption, and that's due to people sheltering in place. Far as sewer wastewater goes, once again, no significant adjustments are included at this time. We anticipate reduced consumption in commercial industrial due to the shelter in place and no impact of the increased residential consumption anticipated, because it's based on a fixed monthly charge that gets adjusted annually. Okay, so now we're leaving the operating budget and moving to the capital improvement program. So this is a summary chart similar to the one that I showed you that's actually in the CIP book that we walked through that shows by category, the different projects and, and areas. So we have parks and recreation, public facilities, storm drainage, streets and roads, wastewater and water. And so for the first year, we have 48.9 million, the second year 28.6 million, and in total, looking at the six years, 190 million. And so what I want to cover tonight is looking at the top eight projects. And so this is during the next two fiscal years. So the very first one is the Halea Avenue Extension Project for 16.8 million. And then we have our sewer system repair replacements, the 13.1 million, so we've talked about that over time. Those are definitely needed to our, to our system. And then we have our sewer plant expansion, and so that's at SCRA, South County Regional Wastewater Authority, and this is our portion. And we have pavement rehab, 6.1 million over the two years. And then we have our flood control project of 4.5 million. We also have our water supply facility and water pipeline repair and replacement, and so that's at 3 million. The sources, excuse me, the storm system expansion at 2.7 million. And then the last one there is our Barello School Park, and that's for $2 million. So if we look at the top five funding sources, for the first year of the capital improvement budget, you can see that there. So the first one is Traffic Impact Fund. And I want to make a note here, as I mentioned, as we were kind of walking through the budget book and the capital section, this isn't all from developer impact fees. And so this 14 million, a piece of that, you know, is just coming from grants, but it comes into this Fund 309 to fund the project. Sewer capital project is the next one, and that's for wastewater. And then the impact for the sewer, for the sewer system. And then we have the local drainage impact for 5 million and the water capital project for water. And so those are the main funding sources. But in total, we have 16 million, excuse me, we have 16 types. And in 2021, the total CIP, once again, is 48.9 million. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about, you know, a strategy for our CIP. So the first is that projects that have impacted revenue sources, such as sales tax, will be closely evaluated for delay or deferral based on forecast conditions. Now, I do want to mention that if we look at our capital programs, the vast majority of projects are not general fund related. We do still have in the budget, our pavement program has funds that are being transferred from the general fund for pavement rehab, but there's really no other general fund capital. The next is leveraging of external funding and city priorities. And so as we look at the capital improvement program, you know, we need to look at projects that are externally funded for which we're getting grants for, or for which we're working with other entities, you know, such as the county or VTA. And then, of course, looking at our city priorities. The certainty of external funding being secured and the risk of non-appropriation. And so as we're looking at our projects, we need to see the source. And, you know, if it's a grant and we weren't to appropriate the dollars, whether or not we would lose the grant and risk the, the future of that project. And then also a consideration for our capital improvement program is to look at, you know, how it would impact the local economy. So to the extent that we can leverage funding and embark on capital projects, it does, of course, benefit our local economy. Few other things to note. It's, as we're looking at the, at the CIP and, you know, if we want to make any changes between now and, and the budget workshop. So looking at proceeding with capital projects with secure funding at this time is important for the following reason. So capital project funding is often restricted and cannot offset operating reductions, you know. And so many of the funds that come in to take care of the capital projects can't be used for certain items, but rather they're earmarked for specific capital projects. Going forward with capital projects assists the construction sector in minimizing additional lost economic activity. As we look to bid for the projects, more than likely during this time, we're going to see favorable bidding conditions. External funding is targeted at construction, maybe provided as part of a broader federal or state effort to stimulate the economy. So we could see funds coming in to sort of help stimulate the economy with this. And then lastly, shovel-ready projects will help in securing external funding. And so, you know, we saw that in the past with some of our projects, that if we get them to the point that we're shovel-ready, we're first in line or close to first in line to get external funding. Okay, so now we're changing gears and now looking at ways to address the revenue impacts that we've talked about. So the first bullet we, we've talked about, which is using reserves or the fund balance, you know. So we already are right now in fiscal year 1920 going to be using reserves to address COVID-19. The next, of course, is looking at ways to reduce our expenditures. And so we're continuing to look at our priorities and to look at ways in which we can reduce our expenditures. And we'll look at the sustainable budget principles as we continue to look at ways to reduce our expenditures. The next, as you know, is seeking COVID-19 state and federal funds in any, any fashion that we can to, to secure funding. Right now, looking, you know, not good, but, you know, hopefully we can, you know, continue asking and, and hopefully at some point, you know, we'll be able to qualify for some funding. And then looking at new revenue sources, you know, you know, now and into the future, including potential ballot measures. So now let's look at those principles that I talked about that are in the budget document. I do want to go through these because I think it's really important as we look at our, our budget and our expenditure reductions to kind of revisit these and, and to talk about, to have council, you know, talk about any of these that, you know, confirm or, or, you know, think that maybe that, you know, times have changed. Okay, so the first one is critical services should be maintained to the greatest extent possible. Resources should be allocated to the highest priority services. No city services or functions should be exempt from evaluation. Across-the-board approaches shall be avoided because they are not aligned with the councils and communities' priorities. And so what that means is, you know, some, sometimes agencies will approach budget reductions and say, okay, you know, all areas, 6%, 10%, you know, that sort of thing. And so what our budget principle says is that across-the-board approach, you know, should be avoided, because it's not consistent with what council has laid out as, as our priorities. Reductions in service should position the city to take advantage of the economic recovery. So, you know, once again, being strategic and, and looking at, you know, services that we reduce. You know, we want to be able to be flexible such that when the economic recovery happens, that we're able to remain nimble and, you know, jump back in and provide the services that we may have to stop providing. Budget reductions should be ongoing and not simply one-time only. So, you know, this is as we're looking at potential reductions, you know, we need to, you know, focus on ones, in, in some cases that are, or in many cases that are ongoing and not just point in time, you know, not just a project here, but rather looking at reductions that carry forward from year to year, you know, if they're needed from year to year. Council should commit to support employees during the transition and assist those who may be adversely impacted. Employees in their recognized bargaining units should be actively involved in developing options and implementing the transition. So this morning, we had a all teammate meeting, kind of run through this budget. And, you know, we encouraged, you know, teammates, you know, as they have ideas to bring them forward, you know, to bring innovative ideas forward. The city should continue to invest in building organizational capacity by supporting training and employee development. So this is a, this is a good one, because we can't stop training, you know, you know. We do need to look at reducing conferences and, and seminars and that sort of thing, but we have to be creative in how we train and, and encourage employees, you know, to do online webinars and to continue learning, because we can't, you know, not continue with professional development. County-wide tax, excuse me, community-wide tax resources should be allocated first to support community-wide services. And then aligned with that is special services designed for only a few should be paid for by user fees. So those that are benefiting from that special service. Administrative and operational efficiencies should be maximized before pursuing new tax revenue, meaning that we need to look at our budget and look at the way we do things and all that needs to be looked at before we go after new revenue. Reserves and one-time revenue should be used first to invest in capital outlay, capital outlay items that could reduce long-range operating costs and thereafter fund transition expenses. New services should not be added nor existing services expanded unless they are highly valued by the community and there's a willingness to pay for them. There should be regular monitoring of financial performance and opportunities to make mid-course corrections as warranted. City policies that may inhibit economic development, especially new retail development, should be reviewed regularly and modified. Okay, so that is all of the, the strategies. And so I think I'll continue on in the presentation and we can have a discussion if, if the council desires on, on any of those. So just want to summarize, the current estimated revenue loss to the general fund as well as to development services from COVID-19, right now is anticipated at 12.2 million. We will continue to update that number. And as we have updates, we're not going to wait until May 15 to share that with the council and the community. We'll share the updates as we have them. The total identified expenditure adjustments so far that we've incorporated into the budget amount to about 2.5 million. And we're going to be working to address the shortfall with minimal impact or as minimal impact to the community. And so looking at next steps. So the next steps involve getting feedback from the community. And so we have this email address set up here, budget@morganhill.ca.gov. And so we encourage the community to submit any feedback or comments that they have on the recommended budget. We have a couple of supplements in the agenda package related to some questions and comments that we've already received. And so we've included responses to those in the packet. And then on May 15, we will have the council budget workshop and will provide additional strategies at that time to address the revenue impact and to receive input from the council of community. And we also have that April 30, community budget workshop as well. And so here's a summary of the different dates. And so April 30, we're going to start that at 5:30. That'll be when we're, what we've been doing, the, the community town halls weekly. And so it'll be at that same time at 5:30 through Zoom. We'll have our council budget workshop by Zoom on May 15. And then June 17, the regular council meeting is for the council budget hearing and adoption. As for location, right now, we just have that as TBD. Okay, so that wraps up the slides. And so I am happy to answer any questions. And then we have our teammates here that can also answer any questions. And so Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so yeah, we'll, we'll be, we're seeing question mode. So I would ask that we spare any comments until after I've opened it up for public comment and closed public comment. So Councilmember McKay, I see your hand is up, you're up.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, Christina and all the teammates at City Hall for working on this. And thank you for getting it to us in a, in a way that we can start to initiate that, that wonderful budget process. So my, my first question actually got answered. And that is basically, you know, we are, how are you going to look at it? And I guess your experience with the Great Recession has taught you a lesson. It's just that it slapped you in the face all at once. So that was a big part of my question. One of the questions I have actually is for Chief Paul's group. And I'm going to stay away from any detailed questions. I'm going to definitely stay at a high level and just kind of a general, general question. And Chief, you inherited, you just moved into the police chief's slot. We, I know that you're interim, but I'm going to call you police chief. The, I'm sure that you were involved in the budget, preparing the budget with former chief swing. But I don't, I can't imagine that you had known or had anticipated the full impact of COVID nineteen. So when we move farther into the budget discussions, will you be bringing updates from your perspective? Any ideas that you might have, anything that might be a little bit different than what we're already looking at? Because I think times change very quickly and you're now the guy that's in the driver's seat.
Yeah, I'm working closely with Christina and we're going through the budget. And we've identified some areas there that we will keep an eye at or an eye on and make adjustments going forward.
Okay, thank you. You're obviously very, very important part of that equation. And I'm actually going to say that Christina and everybody did such a great job. I've spoken with staff in the past. I don't think I have any questions other than the fact that I hope that we really, you know, let's keep this at a high level and and get ready for digging our, you know, rolling ourselves up and digging in in a couple of weeks. So thank you very much.
And Mayor Protem. You're still muted.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, the first thing I wanted to ask was on, on the last slide, we're showing the, the different dates that we had, Christina. Can you, there's an Engage Morgan Hill meeting this Saturday. Is that, that is open to anybody who wants to go as well? I've had some questions about participating in that.
Yeah, so that's a regular community advisory group meeting. So they do meet on Saturday, so it's from nine to eleven thirty. And so the agenda is primarily going to include just, you know, relooking at the goals for that advisory group, kind of revalidating those goals and then looking at the budget. And that is open to the community.
Okay, and that's also a Zoom meeting.
Correct.
Okay, do we have that? Or I can get that later, that's fine. Okay, um, the other question I had was, we, you were talking about dates. When we would have kind of a month that you were suggesting, maybe we do this, you know, more of an in detailed presentation monthly. And I wanted to see if we could get that, maybe have that like specified. It'll be the first council meeting or the second council meeting, just so that people know when they can anticipate that that would be, if they have questions or whatever, since we're going to be making so many changes. Or I think we'll probably make frequent changes if we had a time for them, rather than, it could just be the first council meeting or the second council meeting that we.
I'll work with the finance to see if we can, you know, add, add specificity to when we provide them.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing was just in kind of taking into consideration one of the public comments that we see today and and looking at the budget and kind of how we look at it. There's actually two. One is how we look at the inputs and outputs that are the cost benefit of what we're evaluating. You know, kind of the, the choices that we're making, we're going to, we're going to keep this program, we're not going to keep that program. Is there some way that we can highlight that so that, you know, for the public in these presentations, that they are able to easily understand, these are the changes that we're making, this is why we decided to make that change, just so that it's very clear. I think people are a little more heightened about the budget. I mean, the budget is never, I think, as popular, but this year with COVID, it seems to be very much on people's mind.
Yeah, if I can respond to that question. So, um, yes, that, that is definitely our plan. So we are going to be bringing forward recommended budget adjustments. And as you know, from prior budget workshops and goal settings, we don't have excess funds, you know, that are, that are, you know, idle, you will. All of our funds are programmed out. And so as we look at budget reductions, there are very direct and indirect consequences of not going forward with a project or a service or a program or, and so we are going to explain as clearly as possible what those consequences are going to be. Because, you know, all of a sudden, when you stop doing a program, there's, in many cases, going to be visible signs, you know. So if we look at maintenance and we're going to cut maintenance dollars, you're not going to see the same level of service that you're, that you, that you, you know, that we've enjoyed. And so we have to bring to you and the community what the consequences are of those recommendations that we're going to be providing, absolutely.
That's great. And I think that's also really important because sometimes people may think they're okay with that. But when you go, when you actually explain what that means, it might, it might be a different translation for them. The other thing is, we talked about, and I'm not sure at what point, it was at the end where we were talking about some of the policies and how you look at doing some of the suggested maybe cuts or 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 decrease in spending because we've got to bring down our expenditures, as you've said, since we don't have the revenues. Well, one of them talked about an across the board. And I know that we said, well, we don't necessarily want to do an across the board because, you know, depending on what our priorities are. But is there something that we could do, even if it's not something that we use? It, you know, asking to have that across the board in departments is suggested, you know, rather than someone from the outside looking at that department, that department looking at itself and saying, maybe if we had to, this is it, but let's remember that we're kind of the top priority, you know, or we're one of the top five priorities. But if we had to, this is what it would be and this is what it would look like. So that we could kind of have some type of options to look at and what that cost would be to us, cost benefit, really.
Are you asking a question as far as that you want me to respond to you about across the board?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if we could, if we could ask for suggestions across the board in that way. And then, you know, like I say, looking at our priorities, where they lie. I mean, if this is a suggestion that's coming from somewhere who is one of our top priorities, is that really something, you know, what that would mean?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we go with that approach with asking for an across the board approach.
You're, I'm losing you. Can you guys hear her?
I, I would not recommend an across the board approach consistent with how our budget principles are laid out for a couple of different reasons. And I think that the leadership team and maybe some council members, you know, that have experience with, you know, establishing those, those principles. So a couple of things, one is, you know, in looking at our discretionary expenditures, as you saw, you know, most of it comes from police and fire. Police and fire are, you know, our number one priority, you know. And so dollar wise, they're much bigger, you know. And so all of a sudden, if you're looking for a dollar amount from each different area, it's going to look a lot different taking a dollar amount reduction in police and fire than it's going to look in taking, say, in, you know, administrative services, for instance.
Okay.
And, you know, so then you can look at percentages, you know, and, but, you know, you still run into risks in, in looking at percentages. You know, and so I really want to focus our expenditure reductions, not, you know, department by department, but rather looking at council and community priorities, you know, and, and what are core and what are essential services that we have to have, you know, and, and go and make our recommendations based on that.
And what if we didn't even look at police or fire? And we looked at, I mean, those are really the bigger, right?
So I believe it is prudent that we need to look in every single area. And we will find expenditure reductions in every area. There, I mean, there are going to be different dollar amounts, there are going to be different percentage amounts. But I, you know, I think that, you know, if you look at cities over time that have had to deal with expenditure reductions, every area is looked at and you're going to find reductions in each area. You know, some are going to be, you know, smaller than others, but we're going to bring forward some potential reductions in each of the different areas.
Okay, thank you. I know this is a really tough task.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And before we go to Councilmember Carr, I just want to make a note that the Engage Morgan Hill community group is for the community to look at our policies and our budget. It's not for the, the council to attend those meetings. So with that, I will now go to Councilmember Carr, and then I see Councilmember Spring's hand up as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And are we still on Q and A or providing?
We are on questions only, yes.
Questions only at this point, great, thank you, okay. Christina, in the Fund two oh six deficits that we're predicting, where they're going to need loans from the general fund, are those already built into the expenditure line for the general fund or are those coming out of the balance?
Yeah, Jack, do you want to explain how we formatted that and included that in the budget?
Yes, the loan for the, this year and next few years for Fund two oh six from the general fund has billion general fund expenditures.
So basically you would, if you go to the budget, you'll see a expenditure line from the general fund transferring that money into Fund two oh six development services.
Right, so that is already built into expenditures from the general fund? So when I look down at what the balance is, it's already included in there? Or do, or does that loan come out of the balance of the general fund?
Yeah, go ahead.
It is included expenditures as a chest value item. And it does also include as a payback in the third year, it's a twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, all right, so it's built in already, great, okay. Under the slide that you showed us on CIP strategy, and I apologize, I turning my eggs, I'm looking at the slides on another screen here.
See if I can pull that back up.
We are, you're talking about some of the strategies that we're looking at when we were considering capital improvement program projects. I, I think one of the bullet points, and maybe it's implied in here, is does the project add costs to the general fund? Are there maintenance costs, staffing costs? Is that something that, that these, the CIP will, will review before we adopt it?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we've, we've included in the, in the capital improvement program budget, a section about the operational costs. And, and that is a consideration that we're, as we report each, suggested changes to the CIP that we'll be considering. So if there is a general, if there is a general fund impact to any of the proposed projects, we're taking that into consideration of whether or not we should go forward with that project.
Okay, okay, good. So that is one of the consideration points. You mentioned in all hands meeting, I think it was just this morning for all teammates to talk about the budget and one of our guiding principles on a strategic budget strategy is to involve our employees and involve their unions. When we have our budget retreat, will you be able to bring back any thoughts and any comments that you have received from, from our teammates?
Yes, certainly, both informally and then timing wise, I'm not, I'm sure. But hopefully before May fifteenth, you know, we'll, we'll also have, had discussions with the, with the different bargaining units.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank, thank you so much, Christina, for everything you and your teammates have presented tonight. As a follow up of what my colleague just asked about, I have them on my list too, is discussion with our social partners, you know, during the good days, we always have been really willing to work with them. And then I, I thought that was thought rightly so because they deserved it, we were generous, right? But now we might have to go back and say, hey, the good days are over for, at least for the time being, can you help us, right? And I think that's a discussion to be had. And I think that, that, and I agree with my colleague, Yvonne, should include everyone. I'm not talking about position, elimination of positions, but maybe, you know, if, if many give a little bit, that also adds up to a lot, right? And if you can save a position or two, that might, might be worth, worth the effort. And I think something to look into. The other one is also a little bit aligned with, with across the board. But, but have you been looking, I mean, the answer probably is yes, in, in, into the low hanging fruits, right? And cutting off certain perks that are nice during good days, but they're no longer needed, you know. And if several hundred employees travel less, pay for their own gym fees and so on, it adds up as well, right? And, and I think we should look into that as well as, as, as kind of a policy.
Councilmember Spring, we're in the question mode right now.
Question, yeah, are we doing that?
Yeah, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at all, we're looking at our entire budget. You know, so we're looking at, you know, all programs, all projects, you know, all teammate, you know, benefits. And, and, you know, you, you make this specific example about, you know, low hanging fruit and, you know, you know, we're, we're looking at that, you know, and, and I think part of it's a balance, you know. So I think that, you know, we, you know, need to make sure that we're still, you know, offering sort of benefits that kind of lead to health and wellness for employees, you know. But we still need to look in those areas and, you know, still make determinations of, you know, should we reduce certain areas? So we're looking at all of them, yes.
But I would make sure that we understand that we're in a union environment so that we can't unilaterally make a lot of those changes. But those are the kinds of things we might go back and talk to our units about.
I, yeah, I think that's well understood. I'm not saying something just without union buy in. The other question I have is, is are we looking, and I don't know what options we have that would help us, but into refinancing debt? Because the rates are currently really good, right? And probably your answer is yes, but I haven't heard anything about that yet.
No, let Dad answer that question.
Yes, we actively pursue any kind of debt refinancing opportunities. As you recall, the council just approved the, the, give us a go ahead, okay, to refinancing the two hundred thirteen former ADA bonds, even though it's not the general fund or city issue bonds, but the city is supposed to receive about ten percent of whatever savings there may be. And we also, we're actually, we actively working with the financial, financial advisors to look at the possibility of refinancing any other existing bonds we have now booked right now, including wastewater bonds.
And, and if we were to issue new bonds, does that require, who, who would have to make that decision?
If we were to issue debt?
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on what kind of debt is issued. You know, there's certain, you know, some obligations, like general obligation bonds have to go to the voters. There's some sorts of debt, you know, depending on the amount that can be approved by the council.
Are, are we looking into any of those options too?
We are not currently looking at debt financing to help weather this storm.
Okay, and, and the last question I have, it's a little bit trying to think outside the box here. I, I know there's a lot of restrictions of loaning money from one fund to another and so on. But are, are we having possibly discussion with, with state or so to, because of the emergency we're in, to ease some of those restrictions? That will give you and the cities a little bit of flexibility, since they probably don't give us money, or at least give us some flexibility to move money around. And I rather would defer a certain project, a bigger project, if that would help the general fund, just to give you an example.
So we have some level of flexibility within our funds to do inter fund borrowings. And we have an inter fund borrowing policy, we've had to use it before. And we're looking at that, you know, for part of, you know, how we address the loss in revenue. I'm not aware of any conversations, you know, you know, that involve, you know, looking at relaxing any other restrictions. I don't know, I'd look to Dad or Dawn to see if you've seen anything that would help us in that respect.
I haven't heard anything on the state or federal level that would help us in that regard.
Okay, yeah, as I said, a question is kind, could we possibly consider maybe us starting to ask around or to poke certain people, what, what would help, what could we do? to ask around or to poke certain people, what would help, what could we do? Doesn't look like we're getting money from the national government.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
I think as the, as this goes forward and as the governor starts to implement the plan of getting back to work, I'm sure some of these questions that we're currently having will come to pass. But that's for future meetings where we talk about this kind of stuff at the community meeting and then the budget workshop that we have up ahead. So again, this is just to give us an overview, but yeah, all of those things are going to be into play. And we're going to be looking at every possible way that we can to help have a soft landing, so to speak, when it comes to our budget.
Yeah, I understand. But a month from now, we're having the workshop. Two months from now, we say yes, and now to the budget, right? So that's why I bring that up today. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm now, I don't see any more questions, so I will now ask, I'll open up a public comment. Is there any members of the attendees that wish to address us on this item? Mr. Berenowski. Somebody can unmute Mr. Berenowski's mic. Okay, Mr. Berenowski?
Good evening again. I have three questions and one has a part comment. Even though it's buried throughout the text of the various materials I've looked at, that the Development Services Fund deficit was already projected to be $700,000. And the additional COVID contribution is something like $400,000. And last year in a boom time, it was $850,000 deficit. I think it's very misleading to show the 1.2 million amount on the charts or any table that is listed as COVID related. And why can't you just show the incremental amount? That would be more accurate. So that's my comment question first. The second one is, I don't quite understand and appreciate clarification on the hiring freeze. It sounds more like a headcount freeze. On one of the charts, it showed that the headcount at the end of the, I think even six years or three years would be static. In your, in your comments, you mentioned that filling positions based on attrition would be an exception and not the rule, but then that would certainly mean that you would have a less headcount at the end of the three years. So it's just a point of clarification. I guess you do anticipate filling every, keeping the headcount, meaning you would fill every, every position that leads by attrition. And the last question, near the very last slide on the kind of the guiding principles, there was a comment that you shouldn't impact future development, and it said especially retail. I guess I don't quite understand why the emphasis on especially retail. I thought retail was dead. Thank you.
So in looking at the full-time equivalents and the question about hiring freeze, and so what I had expressed is that we have now implemented a hiring freeze for non-public safety positions. And so right now in the current budget, we're at 193.5. Not all of those positions are, are staffed. But it's extent we have new vacancies, we are not planning to fill them for non-public safety. And so while the 193.5 will stay flat, we would actually have less than that for filled positions. And then the other question, let's see here. Dad, do you want to address the next question?
I believe his question on the Development Services, the first one he had.
So I think that was just, it wasn't really a question. I think that was just how we present it. So I think that one's fine. But the, the, the last question that he had.
Why is retail a priority?
I would have to defer that to our economic development.
Let me go to the slide where we have that. Give me one moment.
Christina, I might be able to help.
Sure, sure. And I'll just, for the, before we, before we get there, let me just read off what the actual item is. Okay, let's see. Go ahead. I'm still finding. Oh, here it is. City Hall says that may inhibit economic development, especially new retail development, should be reviewed regularly and modified.
Right. The, the policy just recognizes the, the obvious, which is that we get sales tax from retail, whether it's auto dealerships or smaller retail or formula retail. That one of the things we wanted to make sure we do is continue to encourage wherever we can, those things that produce revenue.
Yeah, and I think about recently at a, at a council meeting, council asked us to, you know, look at our existing policies to see if, you know, we should relax any of our policies that would help businesses, you know? And so, you know, that's an area that we're looking at. So I think that's sort of along the same lines.
Right. I don't see any other hands up, so then I will go ahead and come back over to my colleagues for any comments or any clarification questions. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief. We're, we have a whole big session that we get to talk about all this stuff. I just wanted to thank our, our staff teammates, led by our city manager for putting this together, explaining how it works for the public and for all of us as we walk through it. I want to particularly thank you for walking us through the principles that guide the sustainable budget strategy. You know, those were developed during the Great Recession at a time when we were faced with massive budget issues. Then Mayor Tate led us through this process of developing those strategies and that sustainable budget strategy and the guiding principles, most importantly. And I think they're more relevant today than ever. And so I hope that we will keep them in mind, use them and abide by them. They certainly allow us to use the reserves as we should, as I think each one of us have talked about. And we, and it talks about the principles that we should have when using those dollars and then how to get back on track and using those dollars to get us back on track. So I want to particularly thank you for walking us through those. And again, I think they are more relevant today than ever. We've come up with our priorities back in January. And perhaps if we were to do it again, they might be a little bit different. But that being said, I think we have a place to start with. But that doesn't mean that anything is off the table in terms of review. And I think the city manager has expressed that, and, and I think we support that, that all of the categories should be under review. And, and honestly, even our contracts are going to need to be talked about and under review as well as we learn more about what the implications for our budget will be. So I look forward to the sessions that we have coming up and hearing from the public and hearing from our teammates at City Hall and throughout the city as we jump into the, the details of the budget. So thank you again for a great presentation, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember McKay?
Yeah, hi. Well, Councilmember Carr said a lot of what I was going to say, so I'm not going to repeat that. I, you know, obviously I've been paying attention, watching our entire presentation. I will say that, you know, every question that was asked of, of staff, of Christina and staff, of what they were doing, well, they're already doing it. And I think that's one of the things that, that we really benefit from greatly in the community. And that is that Christina Turner, as our city manager, has an incredibly strong background in, in finance. And, and so public administration. So that was actually, I believe, one of the reasons why you, Christina, were hired, because we were expecting a recession to come. So we were positioning ourselves. And I think that, I think that that's, that's starting to pay off right now from what I'm seeing. I also want to thank all of staff because I know that, you know, all the departments had, all the directors really do take the task to heart. And it's really tough, a lot of tough decisions. A lot of tough decisions have been made to get to this point. There are going to be some tough decisions made as we continue on. And I, I just, I just want to thank everybody in advance because I know there's going to be sacrifices made on a very large scale throughout our community, throughout, throughout City Hall to help our community. I, I look forward to the conversation with our community. I, I just hope that our community can really dig into understanding what we're doing. Because this is, as we've seen just on the surface, how complex things are. And we're going to have, you know, a seven, eight hour, nine hour conversation one day to really start to, to peel back the, well, feel back to flesh and see what, you know, see how close to the bone we've got to cut. And so it's going to be serious. And I can't think of a better group of people to, to move forward with this in this tough time. You know, our, our staff, our council and our community. So tough times are coming. Thank you very much. And I'm done.
Can I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just, besides working with our leadership team, who obviously are very intimately involved in the budget, I want to recognize above and beyond the leadership team, our budget team. And so behind this massive document, Monica Delgado, our budget manager, Monica Delgado, Hillary Holman, our administrative analyst, Judy Viegas, this fiscal and policy analyst, as well as Barb Boss, fiscal and policy analyst. I just wanted to recognize them right now and thank them for their hard work.
Well, well put. All right. And then Mayor Portem, you had your hand up. I don't see it up any longer. Did you have a comment or no?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't know how that came down. But I, I too want to thank you and I want to thank Hillary and Judy and Barbara and, you know, Monica, for the work that's gone into this. I mean, it's just so detailed and, and it's a great document for anybody who's approaching this to go in and dig in. So unfortunately, we're in a really hard and complicated time for all of our, all of us. And then on top of that, it's compounded with what we now are facing with our budget. So that's the reality. And I think really the only way through it for us is to have the hard, uncomfortable discussions. And if we approach those, I think with truth, with transparency, I know that our community will, will be behind it because there, there really aren't a whole lot of options here that we have to choose from. And, you know, John's right. I mean, you have such an excellent background in this, Christina, that it, it gives me lots of confidence moving forward through this path. But I, I do think, having said that, that we have to look at all of the contracts, at all of our partnerships. And we need to ask them to understand where we're at. We're with them. They're with us. Where everybody is looking to figure out how they're going to restructure their organizations and their budgets. And so I think part of that is making sure that, you know, anything that we can, that will add cost, whether it's now or down the road deferred maintenance, we need to look at if that's really something that's at the best interest of us, as, for us as a community. I think we, we should ask, even for morale and for other employees, you know, that all departments do look at something. As Renee said, we all have to do our part, even if it's a small ask. And then I think it would be helpful to, to show if we could, you know, what, what are the COVID costs? What are the known unfunded costs that we've known about? It, I mean, those will come together. So it doesn't matter where we were. This is where we are now. They will come together. But I think by offering that, it really shows, here's what it is. You know, this is, this is what's on the plate. There's nothing here to, you know, cover over or what have you. And then we just move forward from that. This is the reality that we're facing. But I think it bodes well to transparency and, and getting that community buy-in. So, and those were, that's really the comments that I have for us. I, I hope that we can all continue to see the end goal, that we all want to get there together and that we'll work together, no matter, you know, what the cost is. We're going to do this. As we've been saying, you're not alone. We'll do it together.
Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it brief to just to continue what my colleague just said. I agree we're in this all together. And I really appreciate all those folks. There weren't many, but there were some from our community that are listening tonight and ask questions. And I, and I really would encourage them, as well as others that have not called in tonight, to let us know what their thoughts are and where they think priorities should be right now. I'm really interested in hearing from others than just those who are here tonight. Can approach me personally or send all of us an email or so, and then, or, well, we can't meet in public these days, but so can have Zoom meetings or something. But personally, by, by nature, I'm an optimist. I, I do not project these days are as bad as the Great Recession was. I think it will end quickly, and I, I project they will disappear fairly quickly compared to other recessions as well, if you want to compare it to recession. But, you know, in any, any day like this is also an opportunity. And I would encourage you, Christina, to also look at opportunities, not just where can we cut, but maybe where should we invest to actually automate certain processes, improve processes that help us streamline and, and down the line over next year, two or three, help save costs. So, so, and, and that's a chance, an opportunity. And our community needs hope, right? And, and hope is the good days are still ahead of us, right? And I just don't want to say everything is bad now. There's still a lot of companies doing well. A lot of us still have jobs and are doing okay. So let's not, not forget that I, it's not like it was. But yes, there are many, and especially those who are really needy often, that have less than many of us, that now need our help. And as we look into where do we cut, we have to make sure we don't forget about those that really need us right now when, when we talk about services. So, so, you know, that, that there's a lot of halves. They don't need, need as much, right? There's a lot of have-nots that need us even more so than ever. And, and, and we have to look from that angle as well. But thank you again for everything. I look forward to the workshop, I guess, the next opportunity. Thank you.
All right. So it's all been said, so I'll just say thank you. And with that, if there's no other comments, we just were receiving that presentation, so that ends that. I'll ask my colleagues if there are any future agenda items that they'd like to bring up. Seeing, are you raising your hand, Councilmember Spring?
I'm raising it here.
Okay.
I just saw a comment in the chat room. I guess the Zoom link was bad to, not easy to find, so.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna mention that, but is that a future agenda?
No, no, no. I just thought, I don't want, want the meeting to end without anyone.
I, I'm, I'm on it.
I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
That wasn't my question. I was just.
No, no. City manager?
Yeah, Michelle Bigelow just unmuted, and she, I think she wants to comment on the Zoom link.
Okay.
I was just going to clarify, Mayor, that I know that one member of the public was having an error. I did test that Zoom link after he had an error and it opened right up to the meeting. And we have it right on the first or second page of the agenda, which is what our formatting allows. If it was, it was missed incorrectly copied into another email, I can follow up on that. But our agenda formatting does kind of limit how we can put information on there. And we don't specifically have it called the Zoom link on our agenda for security purposes. We have created a bitly to change it so that it's harder for hackers to crash our meetings.
Understand.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Well, that is the first that we've heard that there has been an issue with the link. But I will ask if any of the attendees that are currently on our meeting right now, if they've had an issue getting on, if you could please make a chat in the, in the comments there, let us know your difficulty and then we'll be able, we'll be able to fine tune that a little bit more. So with that. Councilmember Spring, you had a future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, shift your mind, totally different topic, but we just had an incident again in the neighborhood where I live. But I heard it from many other neighborhoods too, that there's a lot of issues in the past few months with, you know, those where you have those central mailboxes, those being broken in or damaged or so. And, and it seems like the service being provided by our local post office is everything but satisfactory. And people really struggle. And now that all those checks seem to be coming in, that seems to entice even more damages to those mailboxes. And that's an issue for those who are waiting for, for checks. So I wonder if. So I wonder if the city could reach out to, I don't know, locally or to whoever is the postmaster to get a statement, really look into that and maybe come back with some data, how many are really happening a report.
So, Councilmember, is this, is it safe to say this is something that you're asking of the city manager and not a future agenda item?
Interrupting, I was going to say we can do that offline. I'm more than willing to do that. And the same, also, we can do it offline, but I'd like to have insight into, we seem to have a lot of break-ins into cars lately, per reports floating around. I don't know if that's confirmed, but if we could share some data, if that's A, actually true, and B, if it is true, what are we doing to, to prevent that?
If I could just make two quick comments. Actually, one of the council members notified me of a great service that's out there, USPS. You can go to their website and sign up to receive an email notification each day that lays out a picture of each mail item that you're going to receive. And I saw the post that you're talking about, Councilmember Spring, and somebody did share that, I believe. So I was glad to see that that was shared out. And so that would help somebody that, you know, did have their mail taken, so they know what was actually missing. And then as far as the crime goes, we can, you know, provide some updates on that, you know? And I will let you know that, you know, we do anticipate, not just in Morgan Hill, but because of COVID-19, people have been released early from the jail system and that is going to have an impact on our crime. And so the chief can share more information at a future date.
So, Councilmember Spring, for clarification, is it safe to say that you can take those concerns offline and we don't need a future agenda item? Is that correct?
Yes, unless city managers think it's appropriate to.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have an agenda. Chief, is there anything you wanted to share right now or will follow up with the council?
Yeah, you, you nailed it right on the head. The jails have a population that's decreased 29% due to the COVID-19 early releases. That, and with the current sentencing reforms, we are seeing a lot more recidivism out on the streets. And we will look into the stats regarding burglaries in the post office and get back to you.
Thank you.
All right, with, okay, so that ends item number four and our future den items. I just want to say, well, we got about less than two hours left in Earth Day. I forgot to say Happy Earth Day, everybody. But I also want to recognize now that we're entering the sixth or seventh week of this shelter in place, I want to really emphasize how appreciative I am of our teammates for putting not only this meeting together, but our weekly town hall meetings, the other things that we've done above and beyond during this, this time. I mean, it's almost become, holding these meetings now has kind of become routine. It's weird to say. And how smoothly they have gone, except for, we had one member of the public that had an issue. But for the most part, we've been able to really adapt, I believe, rather quickly. I don't have any other thing to hang it on, because I haven't attended by Zoom any other city council meetings. I have attended other meetings with my outside activities, and I'll have to tell you, they don't go that smoothly. So I just want to be presumption, I don't want to be too presumptuous, but I think I speak on behalf of all of my colleagues, how much we appreciate the work that our teammates are doing. I don't think our members of the public realize, I was at City Hall last, last week, there were four people in City Hall. Our staff, our teammates are working from home, making this city run. So I just, again, on behalf of my colleagues, if I can be so presumptuous, I want to thank everyone for the fine work that they're doing, and please keep it up. We appreciate it, and I know the members of the public appreciate it as well. So, I will, I will stop bloviating and call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.